All right, call a meeting to order. Celeste, please call a roll.
Mead.
Here.
Evans. Slupka.
Here.
Casarag.
Here.
Burton House. Ellsberg. Stacking.
Here.
Quorum.
All right, thank you very much. Next item is the approval of the agenda for this evening.
Move to approve.
Stacking.
Move in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Next item is approval of minutes of the February 27th, 2020 meeting.
Move to approve.
Stacking.
Move in second and all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Post. Okay, so this evening, we have one item on our agenda, and it's a concept review. It's for Emma's Landing. It's a conceptual review of a 45-unit affordable rental housing development. The concept will require comprehensive plan amendment, planned unit development amendment, and site plan approval. The location is north of Lewis Road, east of Wood Avenue. The applicant is Tracy Manning of the Burton Foundation. Before we start the meeting, I'll go through the procedures. It's slightly different than our public hearing procedures. Very similar, but it is slightly different. So I'll read the procedures for concept review, so everybody knows what's how we're going to move forward with this evening's meeting. Item number five on the agenda is a concept review. The Planning and Zoning Commission will not formulate a recommendation for the contemplated development. A concept review provides the Planning and Zoning Commission and the public with an opportunity to ask questions, provide informal review comments, and convey any concerns they may have. A public hearing will be required before the Planning and Zoning Commission in the future if the developer decides to submit a formal application for the contemplated development. Notice that the public hearing will be mailed to all property owners within 500 feet of the property and would be published in a local newspaper no less than 15 days prior to the public hearing. At a public hearing, all interested parties will be invited to present testimony for and against petition, cross-examine witnesses presenting testimony for and against petition. The procedure for this procedure we will follow for this concept review this evening is as follows. First, the developer will present an overview of the contemplated development and present any supporting plans or exhibits. Second, the Planning and Zoning Commission members will have an opportunity to ask the developer questions. Third, members of the public will have an opportunity to ask questions, provide comments, and convey any concerns they may have. Fourth, the developer will have an opportunity to answer questions and respond to any comments made. Finally, the Planning and Zoning Commission will provide the applicant with informal review comments and convey any concerns they may have. We are taking minutes of the meeting, so you do not if you do plan to speak tonight, we ask that you provide a name and address on the registration sheet as you walk in the door on the front table over here. We also ask that you state your name and address when you approach lectern to speak. If you speak multiple times, please state your name each time. Everyone that wishes to speak will be given an opportunity to do so. However, if your comment has already been made or your questions have already been asked, it's not necessary to repeat it. Does everybody understand how we're going to proceed this evening? Okay, very good. So we'll hear from the applicant.
Good evening. Can you hear me okay?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. My name is Tracy Manning. I'm with the Burton Foundation, 2090 Larkin Avenue, Elgin, Illinois. And we're here tonight to talk with you about a 45-unit community consisting of townhomes in Geneva. It's approximately 7.75 acres. It's undeveloped land running along the train tracks near Kaneville Road and Lewis Road. We have in the unit mix, we have 15 two-bedroom units, and we have 33 three-bedroom units. We have rent restrictions and income restrictions. We're going up to 80% of the area median income. On 15 of the units, the balance will be at 60% of the area median income or less. So at 80%, one person making $49,950 per year can live there. And at 60%, one bedroom, one person would make $37,440 or less. That's the incomes right now. We move forward with this development. By the time we build it, we'll have at least another year of incomes, so the income may go up. We have on the two-bedroom units, there are 950 square feet average, and on our three-bedroom, there's 1,250 square feet. The tenant will pay the heat and electric, and the owner will pay water, sewer, and trash removal. The developments are third-party property managed by professional property management companies. They have very long and lengthy lease. They have many riders that go along with every applicant, and every resident who lives there has to sign all riders for the community. We have zero tolerance in our buildings, and if someone does not follow the rules of the lease or any of the riders, they lose their apartment. We only have to do this one time for one resident, and then we don't have a problem again. The latest one, we haven't had an issue with Marison Mill in South Elgin. It's a 55 and older development. We leased that up in a month and haven't had any issues. We did have one issue in Waters Edge where the residents are actually responsible in their lease for the people that come to visit them. So one of the people that visited one of the residents in South Elgin was out of compliance of our lease, and that resident lost their home. So we're very strict on tight quality property management in our buildings. Any of the buildings that we have on our website, you could go by any day of the week, go walk the building unannounced, and you'll see the quality of our construction, but also our management. We have tonight here the architect who will be speaking with you, and we have the civil engineer who will be speaking with you as well. I can answer any questions that you may have so far.
Tracy, I have one question on the income side. There's an income that's targeted that they cannot exceed in order to be able to be in a unit. Do you also manage the percentage of housing cost of income so that it does not exceed a certain percentage of income?
So you're saying the percentage of their income goes to housing?
Correct.
My goal and what I set for the management company is I really don't like to see people over 40-ish percent of their income to housing, so they have money for the utilities, car, insurance, medical. So our goal is around 40 to 42%.
It's not a mandate, but it's something you do look at.
It's our guide that we use, yes.
That's good.
We can make decisions for folks. If they come in, and we really just don't believe they can make the payments, it's easier to let them know, "There's another place for you, and we'll recommend other places," as opposed to them failing in the building that we built.
Great, thank you.
Sure. Do you have management on-site? You mentioned?
There, it will be a property manager on-site. There's an office there, and there's maintenance on-site as well.
So that's regular business hours?
There's regular business hours, but we also have 24/7 emergency phone, so they can call anytime.
Any other questions? Okay, we'll hear from your architect.
I have a question. So in terms of upkeep, I think it's kind of my main concern, the aesthetic of it and maintaining that for the neighborhood. When maybe I just don't know how rental units work and things like that, but is there a fund that's being saved up for new roofs and things like that, like an association?
There is. So this will be an approximate $18 million, $500 development. We have replacement reserves that we fund upfront when we close on the development, and we have insurance and tax, all of those reserves. While we're operating on a monthly basis, we actually pay into the reserves. Our buildings annually will resurface parking lots, re-stripe. We mulch every spring. If there's a tree that is dying, we'll actually remove it and replace it. We want our buildings that you can go see, like I said, you can drive by them all, our buildings to look as good as any high-end market rate unit. We build green communities. We're entirely efficient energy-wise, and the aesthetics on the outside are the products that we use on the exterior actually have a longer life, I believe it's 35 to 40 years on the exterior. So there's constant maintenance, but there's also constant improvements annually.
Okay. Thank you.
So for the grounds, then, you have like a management, you contract that out for grass cutting and landscaping management?
For the for this property, we will outsource the mowing and the snow removal.
Okay.
And weed whipping and making sure everything is good. Now, if a tree dies, probably our maintenance man would take it out and replace it. It's not that hard. And then they will and the maintenance man will be responsible for the upkeep of the entire community.
Okay. Any other questions at this time? Yes, John?
Sorry, going back to the income. The chart that rolls over from one page to the other shows a different number of people. So depending on the number of people that are contracted to live in the home, that would be a new maximum amount of income.
If you go to a four-person household, on the 80%, they can make $71,300. And then on the 60% maximum, they can make $53,400.
Okay, perfect. I understood that correctly, then. If someone is contracted to live there and then they get an increase in income, what happens?
They don't have to leave.
Okay.
They can win Lotto and still stay.
Okay. Hold on. Okay, thank you.
And we don't have a lot of turnover in our developments. They're well-maintained. They're beautiful. We do use higher-end materials because we want it to look good and we want it to last. Folks really don't want to leave our buildings. And the good news is we don't have to evict very often.
Great, thank you.
Welcome.
Anything else at this time from the commission?
Okay, I'd like to introduce the architect, Lane.
Hi, everybody. Lane Allen, Allen &amp; Peppa Architects, 215 Fulton Street in Geneva. And it's nice to be here. So these, by the way, these are some of the things that she was specifically referring to. Lou is going to come back and talk about the site context, but there are, in fact, nine four-unit buildings and three-three unit buildings. And so here's an example of the three-unit building, and it's got a variety of materials. I know it's kind of distorted and discolored, but so you can kind of see that these are stone panels, prefabricated stone panels, and that's, you know, you can see kind of the Wayne Scott, or, you know, three foot four high up to the front doors. The other side, the other end unit, of course, is just like this, so it's kind of at a perspective here that you're seeing. And then there's some decorative shingles up in the upper gables. In this case, we've got, you know, the three gables that kind of tie the elevation together and the decorative filigree up in the gable ends. It's just a 612 pitch. We were at actually 812, but we're literally one foot above the requirement that you stipulate, so we just went for the 612. And we've we've got so we've got two end units here, and then we've got this central condition for the access to the third unit. And the difficult thing about this is that we have a lot of accessibility. And if you've ever dealt with the accessibility code, it's kind of unrelenting. So in this case, you've got, sorry to go into the specifics, but you've got a four-inch gas curb and a 2.6 inches of grade slope within the garage. So now I'm down 6.6 inches from the finished floor, and I got to make that up for the civil engineer in this. So there's this has actually got a handicap ramp as you go in the front door. The thresholds are at the front doors are those doors are specially ordered, so that's a handicap threshold. And in theory, we've got full accessibility through the site. And that's not an easy thing to do. And one of the other reasons we can do this easily or more easily is because these are just four-inch slabs on grades. There are no basements or anything like that. So at least we don't have that dimensional problem that you would have if you did this as a framed building. To pick up on a couple of things that Tracy was talking about and the questions that were asked, the two words that come to mind are durability and energy efficiency. Fortunately, in Illinois, we have the energy code, and we're always, you know, architects are always responsible for meeting the current energy code. So we're not only going to be meeting the energy code, but the contractor, Door Creek Construction, does their own foam insulation, so we get to benefit from that system. And the benefit of the foam is that it greatly decreases infiltration, and so it's just going to be a very well-insulated building. Of course, attics are at R49, et cetera. So that you were asking questions about durability. This is a lifetime roof, you know, versus 30-year shingles. Of course, none of us will be here after 30 years to know if they survive after 30 years, but it's now called a lifetime shingle. It used to be called 30-year shingle. And so and then the engineered siding is LP, and, you know, this is pre-finished painted siding. And we've got white trim, white windows, white sheet metal trim detailing. So there's a nice composition within the variety of these materials. And here, so we've got, and again, it's a bit so the keep enlarging this. So we've got this nice variety of colors, and we've actually kind of finished our drawings for your for the next hearing. And, you know, we've got compositional illustrations of these particular colors and different patterns or different color combinations, because we have a siding color and then we have a shingle color. And and that gets us an opportunity to kind of play with the color combinations and composition for the anti-monotony parameters of the site. So we've got 12 buildings, will have at least six different parameters, six different compositions. None of the two will be next to each other, that kind of thing. So and so this is, again, the simple elevation of the three unit. And let me just go back. So what's going on here is obviously from the elevation is that we actually in our pre where we use this design conceptually down in Oswego in 2012. But the per se handicap unit, which was a two-story unit at that time, had an elevator. And that was just, you know, it's just an awful lot of work because the inspectors and it's just kind of a lot of nonsense. So we decided, let's get rid of the elevator and go with a ranch. And of course, there's a lot of value in ranch these days, and that's what people like. So we increased, we got rid of the elevator, and we've got 15 ranches in the design. And so here's a bedroom here and a bedroom here, kitchen, dining room, living room. And then all of the units have two-story garages, so we've got, you know, the utility room connection. And then in this case, there's a bathroom here for this, and then an open bedroom here in the second in the central unit. And this is the same unit as in the four unit. The bedrooms are on the second floor, and here's a three-bedroom unit on the second floor. So it's a very simple and as per the requirement of the city, the demising wall, the party walls are all concrete block. So and then, again, back to durability, and that that will be a long-term value acoustically, lateral stability, et cetera. Two-by-six wall construction on the exterior, again, closed-cell foam, very simple, you know, box-dressed floors, simple flat ceiling above. And here's a four unit, and the lower one is in the rear, and you can kind of see the bay-window shingle pattern of a contrasting color. And and here's that. So here on the left is that one-story ranch, and then the rest are two stories. And then this particular unit on the right, this this area is actually a two-story living room right here, the only whereas on the ranch, this corner is a cathedral ceiling. So it's a nice little room with a nice vaulted ceiling. So there's a nice variety, but at the same time, this is Illinois Housing Development Authority, and there's got to be some consistency between the units so that they're all relatively democratically equal. Again, we wanted to have this end gable so that we the kind of a nice cascade of gables that try to tie all the different things together. And the reason why we wanted side entrances, it makes the building a little bit more sculptural so that when you compose them around the site, it's not just a planer. It's, you know, it's kind of in the round. People will come around, landscaping will come around, and it just adds a nice little variety to the entire site. And oh, these are actually Mill Street in Oswego, and you can kind of see, you know, how like these these four, this unit, this unit, this unit, and this unit, and these end units are nearly the same. There were some details we wanted to change, but this was the the unit that had an elevator in it, so now that turned into a ranch. But all of you'll notice this column detail is different than this column detail and this column detail. So again, we try to kind of mix things up and helps people stay oriented to their house, and same thing with color. And here's another different column detail. Here's a different column detail. So just little things, you know, that add variety. And the only other thing I'll talk about is Chris Lannert's in my office. He's our landscape architect, and and he's done a nice job at the street trees. Of course, we'll have foundational plantings, and and all of that will be described in the, you know, in the preliminary hearing, you know, that's coming up. But, you know, things are kind of shaping up nicely for a nice little development.
Yes, John?
One question. You had made a comment that the site was fully accessible throughout. Is that the same as being handicapped accessible? Because in the write write-up, it says eight dwellings will be handicapped accessible, five will be handicapped adaptable, and one will be sensory impaired.
Correct.
That's a total of 14.
Correct. But there's other other aspects of our application that get into further details because so that's a minimum requirement, and then there's there is extra benefit if we make things further accessible.
Okay, maybe when you bring this forward, maybe highlight that a little more.
Okay.
This is the minimum requirement, but then tell us exactly what you're doing.
Okay.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, Michael.
Just a clip of the Oswego development you mentioned, that's an affordable development?
Yes, it is. And in that case, the that was just after the 2008 economy. All the utilities were in. We followed that design parameter. That was a market rate development, and since all the utilities were in place and, you know, everything almost except for the foundation. So we we just picked up where the guy had left off and and finished the development. And and that's that was kind of the reason why it made so much sense. We were solving a problem that that had existed from the previous developer going belly up.
Thank you. Brad, do you have anything?
This property that's sort of in front of in between Lewis Road and the development?
Yeah, I call it the Crescent.
What's up with that, I guess, is my question. Is that?
Tracy, would you like to talk about that? By the way, the railroad railroad is back here, and just to get oriented. And then this is a railway buffer that we do not own.
The Crescent, as Lane has called it, is the homeowners' associations. They own that from Sterling across the street, and we are asking for the easement on the north and the south sides off of Lewis Road to access. We want to keep that open space if we can, just to keep separation from the development in the street.
You would prefer it that way?
I think that the homeowners may want nothing there instead of us building buildings there. We haven't they haven't made the final decision on which way they want to go. I don't think if they want us to purchase the property, we will try to purchase it. But I don't I think what we are looking for is vacant land. We don't our goal is not to build anything there, and it's not our intent. We're not going to. The site is the way that it's set, and if they want us to purchase that property, assuming we can have the funds to do that, we are still only going to have the access on the north and south side across it without anything disturbing that land.
Yes, you know, just some feedback. I feel like we're if you're on Lewis Road, and I know that's not a it's not Kaneville Road right there, but I feel like we're looking at the backs of people's houses from the road rather than the front. And I don't know, and somehow or another, it feels a little unnatural to me that the front of the houses are sort of around the bend. I don't know, have you guys explored even leaving the Crescent? I get that that's an issue.
Yeah, that's why we wanted it away from the Lewis Street so you don't see that. And I believe that a couple of the buildings were turned for that particular reason. You can explain that.
Here you can kind of see what you might call the back of the site. And, you know, I think and actually, it's kind of interesting that you keep getting a variety of elevations as you proceed around it. So it's not certainly not a planer, flat design. And I think that that's kind of nice is that that although I understand what you're saying, I don't think it's objectionable because it's it's kind of a I'm kind of overstating it, but I think there's a lot going on. We've got a playground, and we've got Chris Lannert will do some great landscaping that will that will evolve over time and season. And so I think that there's a lot going on within the site.
I guess I just I again, I don't I won't belabor the point, but, you know, people tend to collect things in the backs of their houses and not the fronts of their houses and things like that.
Well, we've got the we've got the, let's see, where would that be best? Here you can see we've got the perimeter fences, there's slabs on grades. So this is the kind of a back elevation, if you will.
Yeah, Mike. I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, I didn't.
Okay. Go ahead, Mike.
Lou?
No, I was going to say, I mean, I had kind of the same observation, but I think as you mentioned, I think I think it could be handled with some attractive landscaping, maybe a buffer to the backs of the houses, especially in all that open space.
There are some trees on the site that we didn't show just because, you know, we're focused on other things. So there is there is kind of a landscape buffer. And then the contours, there's a lot of pitch on this site. I don't know if you've been over there, but, you know, this this hill is nearly eight feet high.
Meaningful.
As it is from the street. It's it rises pretty aggressively. And so it's and I think it's not just a matter of, you know, hiding this or hiding that. It's a matter of there's a lot going on in the site, and I think that's what makes it interesting.
Sir?
John?
Just to pile on their comment, I do think that those are good points. I walked the site this week, and I walked all the way to where those buildings would be. I do agree with you that it is meaningfully set up above the street level. But when you come back, I think you should focus on making sure that there's significant and meaningful landscaping around there. And I trust that any lease agreement will address. Obviously, people have tables and chairs and maybe a sandbox or something, but they're not supposed to store things that should be in the garage, in the backyard, and your property management company should manage that.
In our buildings and in this property, bicycles are not allowed to be outside. The grills, they would have The grills, they would have to put away for the winter. Things can't be left outside. And in our buildings that are two and three stories, they're not even allowed to grow outside because we just don't want that, A, insurance issue, but B, we don't want that look. We're all about the appearance of our buildings, but bicycles are not allowed. And that's in the lease, but bicycles have to be stored inside the garage. They're never allowed outside.
And are the garages one car or two cars?
Two.
Okay.
The one thing I noticed across Lewis Road to the south, south a little bit west, there are some existing townhomes. And I believe the backs of those also face Lewis Road, so it's not unprecedented along Lewis Road. And their access is from another road, so.
Okay. Good point.
Okay.
Okay?
Thank you.
Hello, my name is Lou Warspan. I'm with Civil and Environmental Consultants and 1230 East Dale Road in Naperville. And we are the civil engineers. And I'm going to skip ahead to the civil engineering plan here and give you a brief overview. What we're proposing here is a loop road off of Lewis, providing two access points for the development, full 66-foot right-of-way and standard roadway section with sidewalks on both sides of the street. We are also looping the water main through the site, provide water service to the buildings and fire protection. And we are also extending the sanitary sewer from Lewis Road through the site. What we're proposing currently for stormwater retention is to expand the existing basin and also provide a groundwater water quality BMP improvement with a wetland treatment with that expansion, provide the extra detention that's going to be required for the development.
Can you... That last part, I guess I wasn't really catching. Can you say that again?
For the stormwater detention, it is partially provided for in the existing basin because it was planned to be a development as part of the Sterling Manor. But the ordinance has changed for Kane County. So the difference in detention requirements from what was provided to what will be proposed will be provided in the existing basin. We are proposing to expand the existing basin and add a wetland treatment to provide a water quality BMP improvement per the Kane County ordinance.
Explain BMP.
BMP is best management practices. And that is we're either providing a wetland to treat water, provide a water quality improvement, or you're providing for infiltration into the groundwater system. In this case, it would be going the wetland route and providing water quality improvement in that methodology.
Is there a fence... I know it's not quite civil engineering, but is there a fence around the detention pond now? Or will there...
There is not.
Will there? Is there proposed to be one?
We are not proposing a fence at this time, no.
Any other comments for us? Questions?
Not for this, John.
All right. Thank you very much.
I have a question maybe for Ms. Burton and/or staff. I noticed in the materials that the parcel that's not part of this development that's located south and southeast of this is county parcel? It's not part of City of Geneva?
That's correct. It's unincorporated.
So, and that's something to be developed on, would probably need to be annexed into the city, right? So if that was to be part of this development, or if for some reason access here was not achievable, if they wanted access off of Canville through that parcel, they'd have to talk about an annexation of that parcel and/or purchase of the parcel, right?
Depends on how the parcel was being used. If it was used solely for access, annexation might not be necessary.
Okay. Because it's just woods now, right? Because that's an alternative access point if negotiations aren't fruitful on these two points. Do you... Will you... Will this development be part of the HOA?
No.
It will not? Okay.
Okay, any other questions for the... Okay. We'll start the public hearing portion of the meeting and... Or pardon, public comment. Sorry, public comment. It's a habit. And I'll just go by order to people that are in the sign-up sheet here. So Chuck Miles is the first person on the island.
Chuck Miles, 1015 Westfield Course in Geneva. I want to congratulate the planning commission on getting to this point. You remember back in December and January... December, I guess, we talked about implementing inclusionary zoning changes to encourage affordable housing in Geneva. That's where we're at. The city council unanimously approved those changes, along with some requests to actually be a little more aggressive, which is some of the same things I think you talked about back in December. So we've been successful in getting what we're asking for. Let me take you back a little bit further to let you know, probably more for the people in the audience. A lot of you know how we got here. In 2013 and 2014, the city put together a small group of citizens called to work on Homes for Changing Region because the city was not compliant with the 10% affordable housing. There's several people in the room, I think Maureen's here, that worked on that. That was passed unanimously, I believe, in 2014 by the city. Nothing happened. There was a list of actions included in that, as well as a list of properties. Interestingly, this property on Lewis was in the original 2013-2014 study as a place available for affordable housing. So let's fast forward now to 2018. In the city, I'm also on the Strategic Planning Committee, the city went through a large strategic planning process. In that process, residents were allowed to come to public hearings, provide public feedback, as well as a lot of online. The top two items that came out of that were affordable housing. So the city council decided to approve that strategy and put that in place, again unanimously in 2018. In 2019, through the work of Strategic Plan Council as well as some citizens, the city actually began to start discussing what needed to be done to take action on those items that were in the original Homes for Changing Region. A lot of those items were inclusionary zoning, which is things that the city would consider to try to encourage affordable housing. Surprisingly, in 2019, we had to go back and work again to start talking about why we weren't at our 10% because between 2013 and now, we hadn't considered or approved any affordable housing. That's where we're at today. So the city council, the citizens have spoken and said, "We want affordable housing in this city. This is what we're willing to do in terms of inclusionary zoning, the types of changes we'll make to our zoning to allow that to happen." And we have a property. And we have a developer that has come forward to do that. I'll also tell you from my history, I've been on the board of the Association for Individual Development, which provides services for people with developmental disabilities and mental health. I've had the opportunity to work with Tracy Manning and the Burton Foundation. So it's probably 2011 when we started working with them jointly on the Waters Edge property, which provides housing for people with developmental disabilities and mental health, as well as other residents. That property, if you talk to the people in South Elgin, probably got a lot of the same type of complaints you're going to hear tonight and in the future. But if you talk to the city manager, the police department there, they love that property so much that about a year and a half ago gave Tracy the approval to build just down the street, probably less than a mile, probably about half a mile, I think, Marison Mills, which is senior affordable, which nobody complained about. I've been in that... I've been in the Waters Edge property. Our mayor's been in the Waters Edge property. It's well-managed. We couldn't have been fortunate enough to have such a well-equipped, professional, not only developer, but also property management firm to help us get this to become true in Geneva. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Stephanie LeBlanc?
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Stephanie LeBlanc, as you said, and I live at 2825 Caldwell Lane. I have lived in the Fox Valley area my whole life. I've lived in Geneva for eight years. I'm a proud homeowner, and I live right by Lewis and Caldwell, which my backyard would be facing this proposed development. I have several concerns, actually. I know that they talked about having some lovely landscaping and that they want it to be a green community, but they're taking land away from some of the existing wildlife that's living there. I know there's not a lot of trees, and I would assume that you guys know there's absolutely no trees left because the railroad just came through and took all the trees out. So we already have animals fleeing. It's very, very depressing. And if we add to this, I just... I fear for what our neighborhood is going to go through, to be honest. I don't know if any of you are aware of what a sandhill crane is. Several years ago, it was put on the endangered list. And I know for a fact that they live in that field. I am fortunate enough to wake up every morning in the summer and hear their crazy dinosaur bird noises and love watching them walk around. I'm... I love my neighbors. I love my community. And I'm not opposed to having affordable housing. I wish that would have been available to me several years ago, but I have to tell you, that's not the space for it. It's just going to bring too much congestion into the neighborhood with traffic. It's going to take away land, some of the green space that we have left in the neighborhood. It's so nice to look out and just see grass. I know that this would bring in money for Geneva, and I understand that. But you have to think about the residents that are going to be exposed to this, if you will. As I said, the railroad is already ruining our green spaces, taking down all of our trees. I have concerns as well if they're bringing children into that area. Who's going to be paying the taxes? And who's going to be supporting the schools? When you say there's a 45-unit community, let's just say there's two children per unit. That's 90 kids that are going to be entering potentially our elementary, middle school, and high school. Those teachers are already stressed and beyond the capacity that they should be. I'm a teacher myself, and I'm very concerned about the effect it's going to have on our schools. Sorry, I just found out about this last night, so I'm a little bit nervous, and I'm trying to gather my thoughts. I think I've pretty much covered my points. I'm afraid of the impact on the animals. I would love to see that stay green as long as it possibly can. I truly would. And I'm afraid of the impact on our school system. Thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Ladies and gentlemen, please no applause. It's just comments. I mean, you have a chance to speak, and that's fine. Louise Petramat... I'm sorry, I'm going to have a hard time with this last name. Petriniac.
My name is Louise Petriniac, and I live at 2883 Old Mill Court, part of the Sterling Manor Townhomes. I have just one question. I have one question at this time, and it's in regards to the water runoff drainage issue. I was not totally clear as to where all this runoff rainwater is going to go. My concern is the pond, which to this day is at its capacity with the rain that we have had now. So my concern is this... If this community is going to have drainage into the pond, it's going to cause a problem. It will overflow much easier than it has in the past. I don't know if you can answer that question now or not.
Yeah, you can answer it.
Okay.
So in regard to the stormwater drainage and the runoff, the runoff will still flow to the existing basin.
Where's the basin?
The basin is on the west side of the site.
Use the mouse, point it out.
Sure. So the existing basin on the west side of the property over here is where the overall Sterling Manor subdivision was designed to drain to, which this lot was part of. So this existing basin will be expanded to accommodate the additional runoff that will be from this site.
Excuse me. You have a chance to speak later. Not interrupt the person speaking now.
Go ahead.
So just as I said, the existing basin will be expanded to provide for the additional runoff from the proposed development.
Yes, Brad?
Can you give us a percentage? Or I don't know if that's fair because I know it's calculated based on homes and permeable surface and things like that. But how much bigger will the new basin or the basin that's being expanded be?
Off the top of my head, I don't have that number off the top of my head for you. But it would be expanded per the page... I mean, sorry, the Kane County ordinance. Yep, yep.
All right. Thank you. Next person, I think it's Lane Allen. Please come to the lecture.
Because I'm not an architect, and I am only using the visual here, your basin seems to be infringing on the pond. I don't understand this basin's proximity to the property. Is it underground? Is it in the pond? When you say expanded, how are you expanding this? Into the pond property, which belongs to the townhomes of Sterling Manor? Or are you going to expand it onto your property? I don't understand.
Just to clarify terminology, when I say basin, I'm referring to this existing pond on the west property line here. So this existing basin/pond was part of the Sterling Manor development and was designed to accommodate the stormwater detention runoff from this proposed lot that we are developing now at this time. So that was all part of the original planned development and the stormwater calculations that were done for this overall subdivision. So with this new development, with this new proposed improvements, we will expand the eastern edge of this existing pond, bringing that out to provide additional volume as needed for the new impervious area that's being added.
Okay, thank you. Ma'am?
I'm sorry. I'm sorry. This is all the same issue. My next question is, right now, the Townhomes Association maintains that pond and the grasses around it. By expanding that pond, it is going to increase our maintenance costs. And it's infringing on their property if they expand it that way. Are they sharing the cost of maintaining the pond and the property around there?
Yes, they will. That's part of the agreements that we set in place.
It wasn't stated. So I didn't know that, and it wasn't stated. Okay?
It's not incredibly rude, ma'am. I'm just stating it, trying to answer a question.
Yeah, but I thought... I thought it was mentioned that they weren't going to be in the HOA, but now you're saying they are going to be in the HOA?
All right. We're going to take each person that's on this list to come in and talk one at a time. Is that agreeable? All right. Lane Allen, please. I think that's the list. Oh, I'm sorry. I think it's Margot Hoover?
No, it's Hoover. Everyone makes that mistake because you're more concerned with Hoover.
I'm sorry.
My name is Margot Hoover. I live at 2809 Caldwell Lane, which is on the pond. I face the pond. It's right behind me, and I have no junk behind my house. It looks very nice from the road. I have several concerns. I have no... I think your buildings are beautiful, and I looked at the pictures and like you talk about Oswego. When you go to Oswego, there's a lot of openness there. We don't have a lot of openness in Geneva, and I'm sure you're well aware of that. My biggest concern now is something I found out about recently. It's not the affordable housing. We all want affordable housing for people. It's the location. And where do... I mean, people that live in affordable housing are people that want to have a nice area, too. On the east side, you have commercial and industrial. On the west side, you have the pond, and then you have Lewis Road. But my concern now is the railroad. Because I'm sure you're aware, and I wasn't aware of this until...
sure you're aware, and I wasn't aware of this until tonight or recently, that the railroad is putting in a third rail, which means they, or third track, I should say, and they're going to be coming in. They, they've been cutting down trees like crazy for the last week. I wondered why they were doing that. Now I found out. Well, that means you're going to have three tracks running. Remember when Geneva was the end of the line? Well, now Elburn's the end of the line, so you've got commuters running all day long. A lot of noise. Increased freight traffic, especially at night, and sometimes when they go through there so slowly, it's reverberating and echoing. And you've got houses right along this railroad track, three tracks, and you're going to put housing there and people there with kids. I mean, if you have kids, you know, what, what attracts kids? Railroads. Kids are cutting across that track now. The pond, you see the kids down at the ponds all the time. So, you think of that safety factor. And then you talk about, oh, it's going to look really nice, and there are no bikes, everything. Who's going to police that? Are you going to be out there every day looking to make sure that they keep everything neat and clean? You know, I ask you. So, I'm very concerned about those things. I would, and the other thing I heard is that the railroad projects is going to take two years. Well, if they're going to be building a third track, that means a lot of big equipment moving. Where are they, how are they going to get it there? Across that? I mean, do they have another Egress that I don't know about, or, I mean, how are they going to get their equipment there? And, and how are they going to build it up? I mean, and how is that going to impact this proposal? I mean, because it sounds like the railroad is going in. So, how is it going to change? I mean, do you want to buy a house where you're right next to three tracks with, you know? I think it should be, looked into the impact of this third track on this whole proposal. And also, if they're not, it's our pond, and we are responsible for taking care of it. And yet, and there is a problem with runoff there. I mean, you see it all the time, and we've, it's like the Fox River's been at flood stage for three years, I think. But we do have a problem with runoff there. And if you have forty-five units, how many cars are you going to have with all those forty-five units? Does each person have, are they going to keep it in their garage? Are they going to have guests that park someplace else? When you have cars, you have runoff and you have pollution. Is that going to add to the, that, all those cars, when you have runoff, when you, when you put all that cement and asphalt, you're taking away from the, the water being able to absorb into the ground. It's going to runoff into that pond, pollution. So, I think there are a lot of things, but like I said, right now, my big concern is this railroad. And what's the impact going to be on this? Because two years, a lot, it's going to be a mess for us that live there. And I just think the location is not the best location, especially for kids and for anybody. I wouldn't, I mean, those trains weren't running like that when I moved in there. Geneva was the end of the line. It isn't anymore. So, you have a lot of train traffic there. It's like, you know, I didn't, it isn't like moving in next to O'Hare when you know there are plants going over. They weren't there. So, I, I want to know what your, who knows what's going to happen with the third track and the impact on this proposal.
The railroad has acquired the necessary property from this site already for the proposal. You could kind of see the notch on the, in the top northeast corner. There's a strip along the northern property line that has been acquired for the project. Regarding the specifics of the construction schedule and access to the site, I don't have that information. It is not. The Union Pacific would have that information.
The trains are still going to be there. I don't care if they're being closer. I still need to know, what is the impact of having a house right next to a railroad track? Have you ever lived right next to a railroad track? If you haven't, you should have that thrill.
Okay. Next person is Joe Ryan.
Hi, my name is Joe Ryan, twenty-five forty-four Heritage Court, lifelong Geneva resident. How you doing? I, I am concerned as well about many of these issues we've talked about. And as far as the water runoff, they're talking about having a plan for, that included homes with the large yards. Now, they're going to have a lot of cement and all that and pavement. So, the water runoff is going to be steep, and we have seen a lot of flooding there. I also wanted to mention about, I'd like the city to review its own city ordinances, and I don't understand why they are, you know, going, doing a one-eighty to allow this project to go forward with, with this such density. Also, I would like the project to be considered, when it, when they talk about the sixty percent and eighty percent, I'd like it to be defined about what area they're going to use for income to cover those, you know, define that so that we know, is it the tri-city area, or the county, or what? I hate to see that pond get destroyed, as I used to fish in it when I was a kid, you know? Also, are these roadways, are they going to, they will encroach the land that is currently owned by that homeowner association? Have those questions been answered? I would like to see the roadway to the south and off of Kaneville, I think would be best. That's about all I can think of for now. Thank you.
Thank you. I think it's Andrew, where's, sorry, I can't, I can't see the last name.
Bad handwriting, sorry.
Andrew White, twenty-five twenty-seven Walnut Avenue. We back up right to, we're right across Lewis there, so our property backs up right against that. So, obviously, we have some questions and concerns like everybody else. We're in favor of affordable housing, too. I guess, you know, I probably repeat what was said before, that I don't know if this is the right spot. I know there's some, a long time ago, I can't remember what it was, there's some other development that tried to go through. I think it was more retirement that didn't get through, and I'm not quite sure why. But I, I think a lot of it has to do with the property, the hard, you know, the surfaces. The runoff is tremendous right now. So, we have a retention area that isn't wet, but every time it rains, you get the runoff that goes in there all the time. So, I am concerned with the pond, that area right now. I know we talked about the wildlife there. I know kids are out there using that as sort of, not a park, but, you know, playing ball, drones, airplanes, whatever. So, I mean, that, that area is used for kids throughout that area that live there, that has sort of been a, a, a nice place for everybody to sort of go and, and take a look at things. I know I like to hit a few golf balls out there, too. I'm not going to lie. So, we just have some concerns with that. And then also the traffic. I mean, Fargo, as it is today, let alone all the other cars that are going to be coming there, is, you know, the traffic down Lewis and Fargo at certain times, I mean, it backs up already past the fire station. So, I can imagine once we start adding, who knows how many more cars, that has some concerns there. And I'm being told that even though I, I believe Fargo should have some extra lanes, that the city's hands are tied at this point to be able to add some extra turn lanes, because it's considered, I guess, a county road is what I'm being told. So, that, that has some concerns for me also. So, that's all comments I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hello. First of all, thank you for the opportunity.
Do you please state your.
Oh, Anna Fraser, and I'm at seven-eighty Lewis Road. My driveway's boop, 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 right there.
All right, thank you.
Um, so, I thought that was a sign-in sheet. I didn't know it was a comment sheet. I'm really glad that I put my name on it, because I didn't plan to speak tonight. I planned to come here and listen, gather my thoughts, and come back as a prepared professional, and respect your time. There was a filipant comment made in the presentation earlier that kind of compelled me to stand up and speak to you, because it made me start to think about my family and the impact beyond some of these generic concerns. So, I'll try to get my thought out appropriately, because I, I didn't have a plan for today. But the comment was that, you know, the thirty-year roof didn't really matter, because we won't all be here. I moved to this town eight years ago to raise my, raise my children. I love this town. I am a proud Geneva resident. I can't wait to wear Viking blue when my kids get older. Today, they are five and seven. And I hope to live here beyond thirty years. I hope to have my grandbabies come to my house. That comment really offended me, because this is important to all of us. And I think we have a lot of concerns as a neighborhood for the income, and we all want to see our community thrive and have affordable income and a lot of different things. But I have a, that we can support and appreciate even what's been presented today. But I have a five and a seven-year-old whose driveway is already on a very serious scary street called Lewis. And I have a little green plastic stop sign that I put out to keep my children safe, and we have a really wonderful police officer who patrols our neighborhood. And we're talking about brick color and siding color, and maybe that's the purpose of tonight. But I guess my comment is to respect the families that will drastically be affected by this increase. When we come back for the public hearing, for all of us to be prepared, but for them to be prepared in the presentation, I want to know about stop signs and speed limits and safety and roadblocks. And, you know, I have gone online and looked up some of the Burton properties, and the online comments are terrifying from the community and people saying who lives there and what goes on. I understand the property owner pitching wants to say that they have really strong commitment, and it will probably be a very strong commitment in the first few years, when it's being taken very seriously to prove that the decision was a valid decision. But in five and ten years, as the roof deteriorates, but I still live there raising my children, I want to make sure that the quality of my community, especially given where this property is, is also held up. And that's going to start with safety, and it's going to start with a lot of different things that I hope in the next stages, we as a community get it. I represent ten houses of families with little kids that are all in the same bus stop right there on the corner, and we will come very prepared. Now is not the time to ask those questions or come prepared, but I hope that you think about that, because this isn't a, a, we're the ones that are affected, right? You guys get this a lot, but it's going to be really important to us to have those things addressed as well. So, I, I really appreciate your time. I would also request kindly, Mr. Stocking, that it's not just five hundred feet. I don't, I think I'm outside of the five hundred foot boundary to get my notice about when things are happening. There's a lot of us up and down Lewis, Walnut, and Heritage that are all really drastically affected, that I think because of where the offset is, we would, like, respectfully like to get those notices as well outside of the newspaper, too.
I can respond to that. So, the five hundred feet is just a state requirement for typical zoning, but you can go to our website and log into the community page and get an email alert on.
And there is an email alert. Okay, good.
Any agenda item that comes before the commission, they'll send you direct emails, so you'll get notified that way. So, that's another way to do it.
Good. Well, thank you for hearing me out. Thank you for giving us the opportunity to be prepared and come back.
Okay.
We have more to do.
All right, thank you.
Appreciate it.
Appreciate your comment. Please, ladies and gentlemen, refrain from clapping. Please. Zachary Fraser.
Hello, Zach Fraser, seven-eighty Lewis. I actually have one main concern, well, I've a lot of concerns, but density, runwater, traffic. But the one concern I wanted to urge the commissioner and Burton to really investigate is the aesthetics of the property. When the next stage comes, I'd love to hear more about the landscaping that they're going to include in their designated property, as well as whoever can represent the property that they dubbed as the Crescent. It's very important to me, knowing that I take this road every day and take the dogs and kids. There is a berm, and there is some trees and landscaping, but it's extremely important, I think, for the aesthetics of the neighborhood and the community to be upheld, to have some type of, I don't know if blind is the right way to say it. But I, I also have a concern about the back of those units being viewable, and the berm today is relatively high. So, how is that property going to be disturbed? And what is it going to mean to have those entry and exit points? Thank you.
All right, thank you. Bill Malone.
Hi, I'm Bill Malone, seven-sixty-four Lewis Road. Just a couple of quick things. I want to reiterate the traffic. I see cars drive very fast, well over the posted speed limit on a regular basis there, and adding, you know, forty-five units, sixty, seventy cars, plus, you know, obviously, they're going to have people stopping by, say hello, whatever it happens to be. That, that is a big concern of mine. The only other question I would have is the occupancy. Is there maximum occupancy, both adult and children? How many are allowed in the unit, two-bedroom and three-bedroom, for the size of that as well? That's all I have. Thank you.
So, it were, it's federally mandated that if you have a two-bedroom, parents or mother, father can be in one. But if you have two children in one, in the other bedroom, they have to be the same sex. If they're a boy and a girl, we can't lease to that person. Does that make sense?
Okay, thank you. I can't read the name, so I'll do the address. Twenty-five sixty-seven Walnut Avenue. Twenty-five sixty-seven Walnut Avenue. Okay. Jerry and Angie Perrinville, I think it is.
Just left, just left.
Oh, okay. Tim and Janice Junkie.
Hello. My na, can you hear me? My name is Janice Yuanke, and I reside at twenty-five nineteen Walnut Avenue with my husband, Tim. We are the first homeowners of our property. We built it about twenty-five or twenty-six years ago. So, obviously, we are very happy with the town of Geneva. And I just would like to make one clarification for you. That open space that they keep referring to is a twenty-foot setback from the curb. The Town Home Association owns that, and they currently mow and maintain that, because when we walk our dog, we always see that that is kept up and mowed every time they mow the detention area. So, that's only twenty feet they keep talking about. We're not talking like a lot of space. They didn't choose to build on it, because we're talking twenty feet. Okay, so let's clarify that. I know traffic has been brought up quite a bit tonight, but the new planned unit development definitely talks about forty-five units. So, we are talking at least ninety cars. If there's only a mother and a father, if there's teenagers, that's definitely more than ninety cars. The, 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 the traffic that that will bring onto Fargo Boulevard is ridiculous. Fargo can barely handle the traffic load now, as the traffic backs up well past the fire station. Cars had right into the neighborhoods, Randall Square and Sterling Manor, to avoid tra, long traffic lights on Randall Road. This puts an immense amount of traffic onto Cane Land. Cane Land is literally crumbling away. I don't know if you've driven on it lately, but it's literally crumbling away. I'm sorry, Kaneville, is literally crumbling away. I don't think it with, can withstand another planned unit development utilizing it on an everyday basis. It's obviously, just, it needs repair, and I don't know if the city can handle that, but it's just something else to think about. And I also was wondering, when we talked about the special assessment for new roofs and, and, I'm sorry, Tracy mentioned that that was going into a reserve. Well, you might want to just question the Town Home Association members. They pay a monthly assessment. They just got specially assessed for new roofs that got put on. So, they pay a monthly assessment, they pay their real estate taxes, and they pay their mortgage payments. And yet, to put new roofs on their townhomes last year, they have to pay now a monthly assessment until that loan is paid off. What's going to happen to those buildings when they do need new roofs? What happens? And my last question is to Tracy again. Where do you line up your individuals to rent in the apartments?
Like, where do you get?
Where, where?
Please address me.
Okay.
Please address me.
I'm sorry. Well, I, okay. I, I'm just wondering, how do the residents for the apartments get chosen? Like, are they in the Fox Valley area? Are they on a waiting list? You know, I'm just kind of curious about that.
And the spec, the assessment of the roofs.
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Are there any other questions that you have?
No, just comments about the, the load of traffic and how that, oh, and the load of traffic on Lewis. We have a, a police officer who sits on Lewis during peak travel times. So, he's out there all of the time. How is that going to impact the police department if there's more traffic? Does, is that going to have to increase the police budget, too?
Okay.
You know? You know, and if... We do... We have... All of us have done our homework. We've read all of the reviews that these subdivisions or planned unit developments that they build, they have bad reviews. There's a lot of crime. So if there's a lot of crime, and then if there's a lot of drugs and a lot of problems in this neighborhood eventually down the road... I'm not saying in the beginning, but down the road. Is the Geneva Police Department going to have the budget to handle it and the manpower?
Okay. All right. Okay. David Gresnick, I believe.
Okay.
Okay. Jay Clark, I think is... Okay. Billy Malakie? 121 Woodlawn Street.
Good evening, everybody. Billy Malakie, 121 Woodlawn Street. I'm also on the Strategic Planning Advisory Committee. I just had a couple of quick questions. One was for the architect. I was just wondering if the development was seeking any LEED status, whether like LEED certified, LEED silver. And also, I was wondering if the numbers... If this development goes through, if the numbers have been run by the city yet as far as how close it gets us to our state goal of affordable housing. And then I guess I just wanted to make a quick follow-up comment on some of the concerns by Mike and Brad was with... How the development's facing, some of these rear properties are facing the road. I'm pretty sure a lot of the homes along Lewis and Kainville currently... They're properties that, you know, face rear to the street, too. So, I mean, I just wanted to bring that up. So, that's it.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Do we have any answers for his questions tonight?
Ma'am, ma'am, please, one second. You have an opportunity to speak, all right? Okay. One at a time. That's how we're going to do this. Yes, sir.
Very simply, they... We're going to exceed the state energy code, and there's numerous enhancements. We're not going with LEED or home... LEED for home. And I'm sorry, what was your other question?
Speak into the microphone. Sir, speak in the microphone, please.
Oh, not for you, but for the city.
That's the city's question in terms of whether how this will get us towards our goals, the state goals. And I want to comment on that, please.
The city currently is about 180 to 200 units shy of that 10% threshold. So 27 of the units as proposed would qualify at the 60% AMI to get us to that... Closer to that threshold. So 27 out of the 45 would get us closer.
Can I ask a question?
No, ma'am. I'm going to go through the whole list, and then if there's additional questions, I will open it up again.
You never answered my question. So, my first question about the trade... Never answered.
I believe we did answer the question in terms of the property. The timing and how Union Pacific is going to do their construction, that is union specifics. Specifics.
My question, are you going to take that into consideration? Or is the project manager, the developer, going to take that into consideration?
We will take all matters under consideration as we go into... If this is brought forward as a full proposal, that along with many other items will be under consideration.
Thank you.
Okay. I think Karen Ronowski, I think is that... That's this... Okay. Perfect timing.
Hi. Karen Ronowski, 2808 Spruce Court. Just to let you guys know, I've sat in your chair many times. I do your job for a living.
Ma'am, ma'am.
I do your job and your guys' job all like for a living. This is my background, so I feel for them. I've been at these late-night meetings for other communities. Unfortunately, this one's in my backyard. Couple of questions. A lot have been addressed here tonight. I'm probably going to ask them with a higher level of specificity, and I would appreciate that same level of response or a deferred professional response at another time. The intentional use of this property, is it correct that it was for the water treatment plant that's now on the other side of PEC?
I believe that was the original.
That was the original intention back in the early 90s, late 80s, early 90s.
Yeah. I worked for an engineering company during that time that worked here in Geneva.
At least it was one of the proposed sites.
Yeah, there were a couple, and they booked it, obviously.
Yeah, obviously, we're off on PEC Road now, which is a really nice spot for it. That explains to me that that's why that property is owned by the City of Geneva. Is that correct? And that property hasn't sold yet, correct? It's still owned by the City of Geneva? So my understanding is that if that was the water treatment center, that what the current zoning isn't for residential, is that correct?
That's incorrect. The property was rezoned and the PUD was amended.
For Sterling Manor?
For Sterling Manor, correct.
For townhouses or single-family or either?
To allow for townhomes or condominiums at a density of six per acre.
Okay.
And a maximum of 50 units.
A maximum of 50 total.
Okay. So we're still within the original zoning requirement, but not as a rental community?
We don't regulate whether a property's owner for ownership or for rental.
Obviously, the same as everybody else here, I'm not afraid to say it, there are some incredibly negative reviews and some difficult challenges that come with affordable housing. My concern is the further depreciation of homeowner value. I've lived in Geneva for 13 years and thought we were getting a great deal and handpicked our subdivision from a handful of few that had very rental... Very few communities that had a lot of rental. Worked very hard, went to a very prestigious university and got a very difficult degree to try to get the home that we have now in Geneva. And I've watched nothing happen for 13 years by the constant degradation of my homeowner value, to the tune of over 25% or more than what it's... What we paid for 13 years ago in Sterling Manor. And we've done nothing but put into our home to maintain its value and its use and to take care of it and to hide anything back. There's nothing outside of the back of our house in Spruce Court. So it just... It really concerns me that we were going to take another opportunity to put our values at risk. And that's something that, if you're in an HOA, and HOA's responsibility is to protect homeowner value, and we're not in an HOA in the single-family homes, we're residents of Geneva. And I would like to think that Geneva will also defend our residents for helping to protect that and the communities that we bought into, because it really isn't happening. It's not happening on Spruce Court, and I've got a handful of neighbors here that can attest to that. With that, the tax revenue, I don't understand how the tax revenue... Do these buildings pay the same amount of taxes as a single-family home, another rental? What do they pay? Because my understanding is this developer, it's non-for-profit. I assume they're getting federal funding to build these buildings. I'd like to know what the funding mechanism is for that? Who pays for that? And who pays the property taxes? Is a property tax going to be enough to deal with the density of it? People have mentioned police-fire. I don't think I've ever seen a cop on Spruce Court. Thank God, we're really lucky. We have a really safe court. I know most of the court is here tonight, so thanks, guys. Same thing, tax to, obviously, police-fire. Are these buildings... Do we have a mandate that a rental community is sprinklered or no? Are these sprinkled buildings?
They're not required to be. If they were stacked units, they would be, but as side-by-side units, sprinklers are not required.
Not required? Okay. And then what about plowing? Police-fire, plowing? Who plows that? Is that a new Geneva road? Does Geneva have to build that road? Or is that like a HO... Their own little...
It's proposed to be a public right-of-way, so it would be constructed by the developer but then maintained by the city once it's dedicated.
Okay, to Geneva standards? So that we're not fixing it every five years? I think we put in... Is it a new... I don't know if it was new stormwater or not, but I'll get into utilities. Okay, so not only is... There's so many things happening with this. It looks like the relief lines to the civil engineer are you... What are your relief lines on here? Where's your mouse? What are your gradations? Is that like one foot per line, five feet per line? Do you recall? Two, so we're one, two, three, four, five. You're set up 10 feet from the road, then. So you're a big berm. And we have to maintain that, okay? Because all of the water runs towards Lewis, and it is constantly overflowing over the road. I would encourage you to revisit your stormwater calculations, because while this was originally going to be a townhouse and we're still within that zoning, that's fine. And that pond was probably designed back in the 90s for that calculation, but as of January 1st, 2020, you know that the stormwater calculations have changed. And so all of the infrastructure now that was designed to be good enough back in '95, much of it isn't. So we need to reevaluate that because our system is probably overly taxed right now. And then the State of Illinois just two months ago changed that calculation. So that'll change your... I don't know what you designed to, but that's going to change potentially your basin. You said green communities. I'm a LEED AP, BD and C. Please do not use that nomenclature lightly. If you're not seeking a LEED, what are you doing for that? That goes to open space. Do they have the same kind of requirement for open space?
We don't have a particular proposal before us, but yes, I mean, if they supply a final proposal, it'll have to meet our regulations in order to go forward. So yes, the open space requirements will be met per the city's requirements.
And then what about parks? When do we get to a point where we're like, okay, yeah, somebody said like 90 kids. So are they all going down to the Sterling Manor Park? Are you going to put in another park?
There's a playground in the back.
Where is that? I'm...
Just roll the... You roll the dot. Yeah.
Where's your park?
In that middle, right there.
Ma'am, if you want to take some time to gather your thoughts, I will allow you to talk.
No, I'm pretty good. I know what I want to go to next. The process... So a lot of my neighbors here, I think, get the feeling that it's a done deal and that... But it's not. We have many layers of government that, my understanding, this has to get passed through. It's planning, commissioning, and I would like for that process to be discussed clearly with my neighbors here tonight as to what their opportunities are to continue to speak their mind and share their concerns.
I can address that.
And I think that... I think you...
Can I address that question?
Sure.
Okay. So the question is, is that today, it's just a pure concept review. It's for larger developments, more complex developments. We typically will have a developer come in, and we'll ask questions, we'll have people come in, talk about it, so forth, and give feedback on the proposal. It's purely voluntary. It's not a requirement of the city, but most larger developments and complex developments take the opportunity to do that. Then there's a formal public hearing. If they decide to go forward, they'll have to submit everything in detail, detailed drainage calculations, architectural drawings, show how they met the zoning requirements. There's going to be a notice published in the paper. There's going to be a mailing out to 500 feet. Again, if you want to get the latest, greatest on this proposal, keep track of it, go to the city's website, submit your email, and you'll get direct notices sent to you. Okay? So you don't need to get a flyer from the city. It'll go through a public hearing process in front of this very body. We will then make a formal recommendation to city council. It's a recommendation. City council will take it, and will evaluate the proposal in another public hearing and make a final decision on it. The process usually takes 90 days, could take longer depending on if there's continuing of public hearings and so forth. But typically, the process goes around 90 days.
Scott?
Yes.
Could I add? It's important for you to understand, I picked up this package from the police department Tuesday morning. That's the first I saw of this or knew anything about the project. That's the same for all of us, is that the applicant works with the city to get to a point where they have something to submit for us to digest and you all to digest. So the first I saw of this was Tuesday. I spent much... I'm recently retired, so I spent most of Wednesday looking at this, coming up with questions. So this is our first chance to ask questions, to consider impact on you all and the city, how it meets the city's initiatives and desires to have more affordable housing and some density. So this is our first bite at the apple as well. So we'll give them some feedback, and hopefully, whatever it is, a month from now or something or six weeks from now, they may come back with a more defined program and a more defined application. And then we'll have, as Scott laid out, the public hearing where we'll dig deeper and come up with a formal recommendation. So this is...
Yeah, there'll be a staff report submitted. There's lots of material supporting documentation. It'll all be posted on the website. You can certainly come down here at City Hall at any time and look over any of the documents that are currently on file. That's how the process works.
Scott, correct me if I'm wrong, that has to be done legally two weeks, is it, at least, before the meeting?
Yeah, there's... The notice is sent out well in advance, so...
But the material published so that they can evaluate it themselves?
The notice has to be at least 15 days prior to the public hearing. We aim to post the complete package to the website about a week before the hearing. And depending on workload, we can meet the deadline, and sometimes it's a little less than a week. But at a minimum, at least 48 hours ahead of time is the requirement.
Is the 10% requirement Illinois state law? Do you know the statute?
The Affordable Housing Planning and Appeals Act?
If you leave us your email, we'll make sure you get it.
What other areas in Geneva are being considered for the remainder of the units? Or this, if it doesn't pass?
The city has an adopted affordable housing plan contained within the Homes For Changing Region Plan, which is also on the website. It includes a map showing properties that may be suitable for affordable housing.
Who's website?
The City of Geneva's website.
Okay. Do you know exactly where we could find that? There's a lot on the website.
Yes, if you go to Community Development Department, Planning Division, then there's a code and documents dropdown. And there's also a search bar on the homepage. You could just type in Homes For Changing Region, and it should pull you there.
The development website on the city's website is really actually pretty impressive. Every time they touch any potential development project, the city uploads any document to that. I get an email that something's been done on the development website, and there's a link to it, and I go right to it and see that they've posted a new site plan or something else. It's actually really good.
Is there existing sewer main on Lewis size for this already?
I don't know at this time.
There was a lot of talk about ADA, and I know that there's some, obviously, some basic baseline requirements that we have to meet in every structure for that. Is there some intent to make this, to exceed that and to make this senior housing? Or is it supposed to be just open housing?
I don't want to speak for her, but I think the intent, the way she stated it, I mean, that's the way it's set up right now.
Which way?
How she explained it.
Families or families?
I'm taking notes.
She'll come back and further explain it again, but yes, I mean, it's... There's an ADA component on it, obviously.
Does the city provide feedback about the aesthetics of this? Because I heard a comment about how it matches the rest of the neighborhood or tries to ingrain, and I would push back pretty hard on that, that... engrain and I would, I would push back pretty hard on that, that you don't, it's sort of getting in the realm of what Sterling Manor is, but.
They don't want to interrupt you, but that is part of the criteria that we do through the evaluation and approval process. It's one of the seven criteria that we use to pass the, or make a recommendation on a proposal.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I believe it's your husband, Brian?
No further comment.
Want to comment any further? Okay. I just want to check because you're on the list, so, okay, so.
Do you have a beer?
Mark, Mark Byron, I'm sorry, 967 Lewis.
I don't really have a whole lot of new.
Sir, please, your name and address.
Oh, Mark Byers, 967 Lewis. So I live just south of this. I mean, I know that we're in a major hurry and are really excited to infill every bit of space in this town we can, but I want to clear one thing, because I've heard it a few times that Lewis and Fargo can barely handle the traffic they have now, and that's clearly not true because they clearly can't handle the traffic that they have now. It's just not doable. It's not about even this particular project. There's, you know, however this was designed to begin with, it's an absolute racetrack coming down Lewis. Because I'm sure if any of you have been around Fargo and Randall and had any reason to get out to Peck Road, a large percentage of you are not going up over the bridge, over to Kaneville or whichever, Kestlinger, whichever it is there, and then going that way, right? You're cutting right through my house and you couldn't give a crap about whether or not my kids are out in front. You're getting out there as soon as possible and going out there. So if all of these people are going to somehow not use Lewis Road in front of my house, obviously that's not possible, right? And does the water that goes into that retention pond eventually make its way to the, to the retention pond or detention pond, whatever it is, by the fire station? Do we, do you know that?
Yeah, in theory, that has been the main.
Okay, okay, ma'am, please.
I mean, is that where that ends up at some point?
Okay, well, it's noted, I'll make sure he answers.
Because anyone who's been there in the last, I don't know, 30 years has known that it clearly can't handle any more water. So I don't know if you're planning on digging this pond bigger, but eventually it's got to go somewhere, right? And it, it doesn't really care if you want it to go that way or not.
The plans, as the engineers stated, is that they are going to expand that pond.
Right, but my guess is someone, somewhere along the line when they built my house also didn't plan for all the, all the water to run like the Nile River between our homes and then every time we get more than like four hours of occasional rain for my sump pump, or my, the drain that goes from my house to the stormwater drain to back, back up into my yard. So clearly there's an issue with stormwater maintenance in this part of Geneva already. So I'm not sure how this helps the situation. So if you can figure that out, that would be wonderful. That's all I got.
All right, thank you. I think it's Genie Cr- Chris.
Christakis.
Chris Christakis, yes.
I get Genie a lot. So I'm Jenny Christakis, 2864 Spruce Court. I actually used to live at 2814 Caldwell Lane, so I have the benefit of living in both. So I love the area so much, as my family got bigger, I bought a house literally down the street, okay? So I'm a, was a neighbor right across the street from Margot. Anyhow, I have two, two big things for me are my concerns. One, I'll start with the easier one first. So is this rental community, are they allowing pets? Is my first question. I don't know if I asked many questions and get them all answered or.
I'll make a note of it and she'll have an opportunity to respond to.
So my question is, are they allowing pets? Is there a max number of pets per unit? Do these pets have to be up to date on their vaccines? Because this is affordable housing, so as we all know that it can be very expensive veterinary care. So those are my main questions from a pet standpoint first. I would like that to be answered, if that could be answered now. I don't know if it's can or not.
It's noted, she'll, she'll talk about it.
Okay, okay. So my main point with that is I am actually a veterinarian and so my big concern, actually when I saw this come up, was from the veterinary side is I see a lot of people come in with dog attacks. And I can't, unfortunately, I tried to find some statistics on like the AVMA and I can't find exactly them. But my concern is a lot of these, I see there, before I bought my home in Geneva, I searched Geneva, Batavia, St. Charles, I knew I wanted to live in one of these communities. When I get these dog attacks in, a lot of them are people who live in rental units because they have such a pent up space and there's no open space for these pets to go. There's no yards for them to get their energy out. And so I see them either attacking other people's dogs on walks or I've seen multiple dog attacks to people's kids. So those are my big concerns. I have a four and a half and a six and a half year old who go to that park often and it sounds like this park is more of like a playground than a park. So probably a lot of them, rightfully so, should go to the park down the street. So that's my one big concern. I know this sounds gross, but the fecal matter too, are they going to, is the property going to monitor if people who have these pets are going to be picking up their animals' fecal material? Because that is a big thing at night, you know, you walk in and it's a public health concern. So those are my, my two things from the animal side. And then my other thing was the traffic. That was my, the next thing, because I thought, oh my goodness. When I pulled up the city of Geneva, and I have it right here, there's five pages of intersection-related traffic, so accidents at the intersections. So the number one intersection is Randall and Kaneville Kestlinger, and we all knew that, so that's where they were proposing to put that Dunkin' Donuts, right? And it didn't pass. So the, the next biggest track, traffic problem where there's accidents in Geneva is right outside our subdivision at Randall and Fargo. That is the next one. And you're talking five pages of size 10, 12 font and the rest, and it's above and beyond. So in 2018, there was 28 traffic accidents. 2019, it was a little less, 20. However, most of the 2019 data is after that Dogtopia was put in right by the 7-Eleven. So you're talking about extra traffic from that and now you're talking 45 rental units with at least two cars per unit. So I feel like, I don't know how that's going to handle that. So that's my big concern. So my question for them is, on average, I don't know if they have the data, for a rental community of 45 units, on average, how many cars end up going in that unit, in that thing? And along with that, with that question would be, let's see. Oh, yeah, so my other question is, so does each unit, every unit, I assume, always has the two car garage? How many extra parking spaces are there for their guests? Are they going to end up on Lewis? Those are my other questions.
Okay, thank you.
John Bowe.
Okay.
My name is John Bowe, 3316 Osprey Court. Been there since 1996 with my wife and four children. The last time I spoke in this room was about 20 years ago about the drive traffic going up and down Lewis. At the time, I believe there was a Dr. Smith, we did a traffic study, I'm dating myself, but he definitely did the study. And we complained as neighbors about the traffic and he said, we talked about stop signs and bringing the curbs in. He goes, well, people don't stop at stop signs. You can put stop signs up, but eventually somebody's going to not stop at the stop sign. Safety is my biggest concern about this development, the drive traffic going up and down Lewis. You're cramming that in there and there's, the traffic just can't handle it. It just can't handle it. You got to park down the street, it's more than 500 feet, mind you, but you have a park down the street that has no parking access itself except to park on Lewis. And it's used quite a bit. They have tennis courts, they also have a lot of soccer practices with little kids because it can't hold a lot of people. So it's traffic, safety. I think we feel that you're cramming this down our throats. That's, that's how I feel, I think that's how we feel, and it's mainly safety. You can argue all about the aesthetics of the building, this and that and the other, it's safety, it's safety of our children on Lewis. It's also a bike route, if I'm not mistaken. There's bikes going up and down there all time long. It's not really made to put a rental property there. And I know the city of Geneva put quite a bit of money into building the tunnel underneath Randall Road for the bike route that goes nowhere, I believe. So the bikes come down our road on Lewis and it's pretty busy. It really is. And John, when I heard about this meeting, it was 6:25 tonight. So you had a couple of days on me.
There you go.
So anyway, I'm glad you explained the proposed meetings because, as, I'm going to speak to my homeowners now, that petitions don't work. They want people. I found out at 6:30, so you can sign all the petitions you want, but we got to show up. Thanks.
All right, thank you. Lindsay McCall.
My name is Lindsay McCall, I'm at 2732 Peterson Court. I, like many others, found out about this project earlier in the week and like many others, I have a lot of concerns. I'm going to try not to get emotional, but I always do. I moved here from Chicago because I live next to affordable housing. When I was pregnant with my first child, sorry, I would witness someone get off their medication and attack my neighbor in front of my house. So while we all talk about our concerns about traffic, yes, I'm concerned, I have two children. Yes, I'm concerned about the wildlife, but I'm concerned about my safety, I'm concerned about my children's safety. I moved from the city because I came to Geneva because it was a safe place to live. I want to know what the crime rates are. I want to know who's moving into these. I want to know what their backgrounds are. I love the city so much that when we bought our house six years ago when I was nine months pregnant with my daughter, to be in a safe place, my parents bought a townhouse on Caldwell Lane because they wanted to watch their grandchildren grow up in this neighborhood. My parents come, they're, they're in Florida now, they wish they could be here, but they can't, so I'm speaking on their behalf too. They're concerned about their grandkids, they're concerned about me. I know that Tracy mentioned that there's a third-party management that comes in and that they have a zero tolerance policy. I know others have mentioned reviews, but I'm not sure if you guys have heard them, so I'd just like to give a snippet of their wild Berry Village in Rockford. The first thing it says is be afraid, be very afraid. Unless you don't care about your property or safety of your kids, this is the place for you. There's drug dealers in every building, robberies and tenants, fights every other week, cars speeding through the premises going 40 miles an hour, landlords snooping in your apartments every chance they get. It goes on and on. Another reads, this place is awful. The manager would rather smoke cigarettes with the tenants than do her job. These continue for multiple properties that this foundation claims that they manage and that they monitor and have a zero tolerance policy, and I don't believe that for one minute. I don't believe that. We are small business owners in this community. My husband grew up here. I plan to live here the rest of my life, but if this goes in, it's going to decrease the value of our home that we worked so hard to get to. And I'll be the first one to say, I've been unemployed. I've been, I have my master's degree and I was unemployed in the inner city of Chicago in unemployment offices trying to find a job. I know that affordable housing is necessary, but it's not necessary in the town that I live in, in this specific area. It's not the right place for it and I just want you to be aware of my feelings towards this. My last question is that, I guess Tracy's mentioned that Waters Edge, that the tenants around were very happy with it. My question is, what is the median value of the homes around Waters Edge? Is it comparable to what it is in Sterling Manor and on Brentwood's Pond? I'd be really interested to know, and if you can make note of that, what the property value is and if it has increased or decreased since Waters Edge has gone in. And that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Oh, oh, sorry, I do have one more thing. I know that we mentioned petitions don't matter, but in the time that the agenda was posted, I have a list of 50 people just on Lewis alone.
I'll take it.
We have them over here too. That are opposing this project for various reasons and some obviously cannot be here due to extenuating circumstances with being ill and the new policy of not having anyone in with, if their kids or family members have been sick. So like I said, that began yesterday and I know that you mentioned that you have some more. So thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it. So, thank you.
All right, thank you, appreciate it. Thank you.
Chris Bonner, I know what you're going to say. I've had him my whole life.
I cannot see the last name, sorry.
That's okay. I live next to Lindsay McCall, I'm at Chris Bonner, 2716 Peterson Court. I moved here from Chicago five years ago, grew up in Libertyville, had the, I was fortunate enough in Libertyville to have two, three acres to my house, my, my parents owned it. Moved to Geneva because my wife fell in love with it, we were going to build a house, house in South Elgin, but we did our due diligence, saw the property values, saw some of the school districts, saw the crime, we avoided South Elgin and moved to Geneva. Quite frankly, I've got two kids, I got a one-year-old and I have a three-year-old. I can't, I can't count on both hands how many times I walk my dog at night or even during the day with my kids that I'm almost hit by a car. I've been known to throw bags of poop at cars that fly by. I'll be, I'm just being honest. I know multiple people have called the police. Listen, I get, Geneva's a great town, but we're spread thin on resources, especially policing. This is going to add the, the need for additional police officers, community officers, that's additional taxes that I'm not willing to pay. I mean, but by all means, we live in Illinois, so it is what it is. But secondly, you know, they mentioned, to me, affordable housing includes children. So if I was pitching this, my first pitch around the community itself would have been X, Y, and Z, you know, there's room for kids and we have this beautiful park or playground. I didn't hear that once. And the park we have right now, if you go there on a beautiful day, especially the last few days that we've had and it's in the 60s, it's packed, everyone loves it. If you take 45 units, let's just, you know, let's go a happy medium at three, that's 135 kids, hypothetically, it could be up, could be down. That's a lot of people, it's a lot of waiting time. Is the city going to take that into consideration? Are they going to add on to the current, you know, playground or park that we have today? If they do that, or if this proposed development makes a bigger investment into their park, either way, if the city's going to have to do something, it's additional taxes that I'm not willing to pay. Really, at the end of the day, I love where I live, I love my little niche of people on my block and my intersection, but I'm, I'm, quite frankly, I'm terrified of Lewis Road. It's, it's, it's the autobahn, if you ask me. And if this, if this is the pass, that's $11,000 in taxes that the city will not receive because my house is going right on the market.
Dan Hanson?
Hanlon.
Okay.
All right, I'm Dan Hanlon, I'm at 2679 Cedar Avenue. We've been there 13 years. Before that though, I was a Bartlett Plan Commission member for six, so I know the pain that you guys go through sometimes. I got this yesterday basically and kind of went through and made some notes, so I'm going to go a little out of order. I'm going to have questions for staff and the developer, but first, starting with the playground area that's proposed. Ordinarily, when a developer comes into a town, the park district usually gets either cash donation or land donation. Is that the case in Geneva?
Yes.
Are they going to be providing cash? Because I assume this isn't park district playground, correct?
They haven't formally applied yet, so we haven't received the request from the park district if they prefer land or cash.
Okay. So likely this playground proposed would be, I assume, run by them, maintained by them. In that case, I'm a little more concerned with it. You know, it's just one more thing for them to have to repair, maintain, keep up, keep sightly instead of becoming unsightly. And I don't see the need for it, quite frankly, with a park two blocks away, and I know Mr. Bonner said that's packed, but I just, I'd rather see that park removed. Like any developer, they come in and pack this sheet. I too, come before planning commissions representing developers, I know what they do. They come in and they, they pack the lot. They want to get as much in as possible and then they expect the village to tell them, take a couple of units out. They then say, okay, we're making a concession, we'll take this unit out, that unit out. And this is not for profit, it sounds like, so that sounds like it's exactly where this is going. I think if they remove that park, took a few buildings out, spread these townhomes out a little bit, it would certainly make the site more sightly. I think they'd be able to, I think the buildings look fine, but I think they're just too packed together. I think the orientation of the buildings are a little odd, like you're going to have a backyard on the right side or the, I guess that'd be the east side staring right into a side window of that corner building. The other thing that's odd to me is that little, I guess they called it an office. This seems like a development that's small enough where you wouldn't need a full-time management office. I have a feeling by the time these things are all rented out, that's going to be a vacant building just taking up space, which could have otherwise been trees, landscaping, something to beautify the, beautify the property. enough where you wouldn't need a full-time management office. I have a feeling by the time these things are all rented out, that's going to be a vacant building just taking up space, which could have otherwise been trees, landscaping, something to beautify the, beautify the property. They could easily just use one of the units as a leasing office until it's leased out, and then they won't need that. There's also a comment in here about having a storage shed for materials. I don't see anything on the plans with respect to any storage shed for any type of materials. I was also curious as to what materials they might be storing there. This obviously isn't going to be an association because it's rented. Ordinarily, if it was association, I believe the village would have the right to review the decks and bylaws, make changes, make approvals. Is that correct?
We do review them, yes.
Will you guys be reviewing the, I assume there's going to be rules attached to these leases? Will the village have authority to change those, make suggested changes?
I don't, we don't typically get into the individual leases, but we will review an affordable housing agreement with the developer.
Because that's obviously concern here. I also represent a lot of landlords. I can tell you, in my experience, judges don't kick landlords or tenants out for having a bike on their patio, just a comment. And also landlords don't go through the expense of kicking somebody out for having bikes or furniture that shouldn't be there on their patio. They're happy to have the renter, and they don't want to go through the cost to find in another one. I assume ultimately, they're going to have to comply with the village's legal standards for the setback and the open space designation change. Let's see. That's been answered, that's been answered. And I think if you actually took that park out, took that building out, took a few buildings out, you'd be able to get rid of that setback and make it 25 feet instead of 20, again, increasing the space. Parking is another concern I had. I'm a hearing officer in several towns with townhome developments, and a lot of the concern is parking. In those towns, you can't park on the streets between 2:30 and 6:00 or 2:00 and 5:00. That's not the case in Geneva, but I don't see much street parking space here, and very limited guest parking spaces. These driveways aren't that deep, so you're not going to be able to double-stack cars, I believe, without blocking the sidewalks. So that's a concern I had. All right. I assume the city's going to require a traffic study. I know that's been a discussion point here tonight. If the city does require it, I would ask that the city require them to include Fargo and Randall, that intersection, in that study. A lot of times, every good traffic guy you retain is going to undercount. It's part of, it's part of the nature of the business, but as long as they include those streets, it's going to be hard to undercount Fargo and Randall because that is a very busy intersection. Again, those cars do back up past that fire station some days at rush hour. In terms of the rent that's going to be requested, has, I'm wondering if the developer's actually done a market study to see if they can get the rent for these units in this location? I'm wondering if that's not the case, how low can they go? Is the city going to have the ability, which I don't think they would, to limit the minimum rent that could be charged? Ultimately, if they can't find somebody to occupy this property, these rents of 819 and 1147 aren't going to be realized, and I mean, that could be, these could be $400 units and $800 units. I don't believe that's going to be the case, but it's certainly a possibility. So I don't know if any market studies have been done and presented to the village. Development amenities, again, the playground landscaping, stormwater recapturing, rain gardens, but there's something called a dedicated recycling area. I'm not quite sure what that is. I also don't see one on the plan, so I have a question about what that is. There's also, they're also saying that the development's going to be responsible for paying for the garbage. It's my understanding, in Geneva, obviously, we have garbage stickers that you pay the garbage monthly. Are they going to be allowed to enter into a contract with a separate provider that'll come in and just pick up their garbage? If not, are they going to be required to have the bins? I know a lot of people overfill these bins. Are these renters going to actually go to the store, and there's only like two in the country that carry Geneva garbage stickers, are they going to go to the store and actually put stickers on these garbage bags, or are we going to see garbage bags laying around in the subdivision every Friday morning, Friday afternoon? So that's a concern I had. And there was, there's a comment about 80%, 18 of the units will be 80% max, 80% of the area median. I take that to read, and I could be wrong, but that all of these units could be below 60%, which obviously would be good for Geneva's compliance with the law, but I don't think that would be necessarily good for the area. So I assume Geneva would have to change their code, getting back to the trash issue, they'd have to amend their code to allow for this potentially. I counted 17 parking spaces, and I'm sorry for jumping around. I counted 17 on one, and I think 15 on another. Are the guests or owners going to be required to have a permit to park in these? A lot of times, again, the owners fill up these spaces, the guests have no place to put them. Will the developer actually have rules and regulations that prohibit their residents from parking in these spaces or from storing things in these spaces? Sometimes campers' boats might end up in there, and I realize that's a violation of city ordinance, or at least it could be, but I can tell you, I had a moving truck in front of my house for, I don't know how many weeks on end over multiple periods of time, and that was never required to be moved by the city. So I didn't complain, but I can tell you, people did, and it wasn't moved. I assume they're going to be allowed to park on the streets overnight per city code, but will that be changed? With respect to the drainage pond, there's a level of water in there. I guess my question for the engineer would be, once you extend that out, is the water level going to drop? Which obviously would make that detention pond very unsightly, because then you're going to have basically mud till you hit that water line. Or somehow, does that equate for it? Again, I'm not an engineer. I don't know. So I believe that is all the questions I had. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Mary Schertstall, 2657 Cedar Avenue. I know I did not do well in the last.
They left.
They left, okay. Mark Alexander.
I hope you don't mind. I brought my wife up here with me. She's Karen Fitzsimmons. She's the next one on the list, so we'll speak individually, so.
Okay, good. Okay. And your address?
2740 Peterson Court.
All right, thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to speak. First thing I wanted to kind of say is, the way this whole thing came about, I think, is a little bit insensitive to the neighborhood. We have a very closely tight-knit neighborhood, right? And so you have to understand, so we're homeowners. We've been in our home now for over 15 years. There's a reason we moved to this neighborhood. We're tri-city people forever, and we love our neighborhood, and we love the people and our neighbors, and it's, we watch out for each other. And so there's nothing novel I'm going to say. I think everyone's said it at this point, the environmental impact, the traffic impact, the crime impact, the house, you know, value impact, because we have, we own a single-family home. So, you know, all those things need to be addressed, but I think it's also shocking, you know, you have to understand our feelings that this is being kind of thrown right in the middle of our neighborhood, and just want, you know, there to be a little bit more empathy about that. So we're happy to discuss things as a group, but it feels like we kind of got blindsided by this. I mean, you only just heard about this this week. So, you know, that's, that's what I have to say. And is this really the best place for rental homes? I mean, I didn't move to this community where I live now for a rental. I, we have a very expensive home that's lost value since we've bought it, and my taxes have just gone up since I bought it too. So down in value, up in taxes, which doesn't seem right, and my taxes are pretty darn high. I'd say they're probably one of the highest in Sterling Manor, not to brag, because I hate it, but.
We're the highest in Peterson.
What's that?
We're the highest in Peterson.
We're the highest in Peterson Court.
Which we are the biggest home.
Chris. But, you know, that's, just wanted to, you know, just kind of go on the record to say that as homeowners, like, you know, we talk about the city of Geneva. We are the city of Geneva. We pay the taxes. So we need to be heard, and we need to be considered in this. This isn't, we understand there's a need for affordable housing. I'm glad a lot of Geneva residents thought that that was wonderful, but I don't see this in their neighborhoods. So if they want it in their neighborhoods, that's fine, you know, but this is our neighborhood, and we came here for a reason. We do charitable work, we donate, we do everything in Geneva to support the businesses. We have business owners that we're friends with. We've been here for a long time, and so I just wanted to go on the record to say that. And I know Karen wanted to say something about, you know, her experience with some of these properties in the tri-city areas, and how they start out with good intentions and then kind of wind up somewhere else.
Well, first thing I'd like, Sam Karen Fitzsimmons, 2740 Peterson Court, Geneva. I'll age myself here, but when Wessel Court came into St. Charles, it was one of the nicest rental areas, rental places in town. Look at it now. It's crime. There's a lot of crime over there. Covington Court, the same thing. People can't wait to move out of there that were tricked into moving in there, basically. I've lived in, lived in St. Charles, Geneva all of my life. As a mortgage professional, when this affordable housing came into DeKalb, I started getting a lot of phone calls from people from DeKalb that needed to move out of DeKalb because of the crime that came along with the affordable housing. I don't think that's fair to Sterling Manor or Peterson Court. What's going to happen when this third-party management company comes in? And again, as a mortgage professional, third-party management companies are very hard to deal with. You are going to see things on the porches and the backyards. You are going to see children unsupervised. How are you going to have that many children with railroad tracks right there and a pond like that? You know, people are going to lose children to that, and that's a very big issue. And I don't think we really need that anymore in our neighborhood. Walkability. Walkability is 1 to 100. From our home, we're at a 15. Where are they going to walk to if they need to get to a grocery store if they're low-income? Sometimes people don't have cars. There's no walkability out there. We're very concerned about that. We have zero crime in Sterling Manor at this point, and I think we're all very concerned about what this will bring. Maybe not when they're bright, shiny, new in the first few couple of years, but as the years go on, and nobody cares about them any longer. And I do agree, Geneva needs affordable housing, but there's plenty of other places to put it, where there's grocery stores close, walk to schools that are close. Thank you. That's all I have to say.
All right, thank you very much. I think it's Lauren Sower?
Anya.
Okay. Jared Long. Jared Long.
He left.
Okay. All right. Well, hang on a second, hang on a second, please. Hang on a second. That includes everybody on the list. Anybody new who would like to speak that's not on the list? Yes, ma'am.
Brittany Grubb, 80, West Haven Circle. So I am actually not a Sterling Manor resident. I live in West Haven, and I grew up in Eaglebrook, moved away with my husband, who grew up in rural Ohio, and we moved back and chose to raise our three children here. So Geneva is incredibly similar to Batavia, right? We'd all say, but most of the residents in Geneva say they'd never live in Batavia. There's not necessarily any specific reason, but Batavia is never considered near as nice as Geneva. Batavia has four affordable housing locations, and from a simple Google search, you will see Geneva has a total crime of 160 reported incidents, right? I'm sorry, reported incidents, and out of 100,000 people, 725 total crime. Batavia has 403 and 1,500. You have nine rape-reported instances in Batavia, zero reported rape instances in Geneva. These are all very valid concerns. I'm not saying that affordable housing is the reason or the root cause or any of that, but my point is, I implore Geneva to look at affordable housing as a whole and the company as the bigger issue. These, as Lindsey stated, the reports and the reviews are astounding. They're over and over negative reports of implications on the residents. Geneva is, my husband and I, we had children very young. I worked nights, he worked days, so we could afford a house in Geneva. We worked opposite shifts for 10 years, struggled. We, at one point, lived in my parents' house next door to my clivka. My parents made things very wonderful for us to be able to do that. But we fought to raise our kids here, and I do not want to go to these statistics that Batavia is. So I think my question for this community and this management company is, what kind of demographics do you have in your credentialing of your residents? Do you have people submitting if they have a criminal record? If they have had any sexual predators? If they have drug offenses? And I, I'm not opposed to affordable housing, but what I am opposed to is a non-functioning third-party management company that is not going to continue the excellence that Geneva has continued to have year after year because of the residents, because of the community, and if a foundation, nonprofit, profit, I don't really care. I come from a commercial real estate family. That is not my issue. My issue is if they are not in line with our values of the community, they will only bring our community down. So I think that whoever comes in for any affordable housing across the board, we need to have strict and stringent guidelines, not just for the first year, not for the third year. Yes, I understand all of this for Sterling Manor members, but I'm reporting as a community member. And these children that would be going will have an impact on the schools, on our police department, on the social psychologists at the schools, the social workers. If they have sexual assault going at home because mom's boyfriend is a sexual predator and was not credentialed before renting, my child with anxiety might have an issue because they're overwhelmed with these extra 90 students potentially, right? So I just, I really implore the committee all around the board to credential whoever is going to be building any affordable housing in Geneva. So that's all.
All right, thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
Hi, everybody. My name is Steve Hernandez. I live at 2887 Old Mill Court. I am the president of Sterling Manor for the Townhome Association. I took over the Townhome Association in October as a president. Some of you may have known Rex Hauser. We call him kind of the mayor of Sterling Manor. He really was very passionate about ongoings of what happened in our community. So I'm here just to state facts. I believe that you guys have gotten enough of how the community feels. So when I took over in October, you guys mentioned that this is the first that you're hearing of this. At that point, I had received communication already that there was some ongoings with the city. So the fact that we're hearing about this within this week, you know, there's already been communication, so that's a fact, okay? Second of all, I have been in communication with the Burton Foundation. They did reach out to me through the city, trying to find out more information about our property. So you guys mentioned about the ponds and the basin. That pond is owned by the Sterling Manor Association, okay? That is our property. That is fact, okay? Also, the property that you guys are mentioning with that 20-foot property there, that is also ownership of Sterling Manor. Also, across the street, on the other side of Lewis Road, there's another pond, or another retention area, that is also property of Sterling Manor. Okay, those are all facts. That's all I'm here to state. What I will tell you is, is that these ponds, retention areas, are taxed, okay? I wish I could have brought you guys pictures today. I just came from work, so I didn't have time to get all my stuff together, and I'll save that for the future meetings. So that is a concern of mine, as the president of the association, is our retention areas. I did receive communication from Tracy yesterday regarding them wanting to access and make adjustments to that pond or the basin. So we have not made any agreements with the Burton Foundation at this time. Our first association meeting will be held in April. We will be putting notice out to residents that tomorrow, once we confirm the room with the Park District. I'm assuming we're going to probably need a bigger room for that meeting. So I just wanted to come in, state the facts. The concerning part to me was, we keep talking about that pond like it doesn't belong to us. That is our piece of property. We have not made any agreements yet with, with the Burton Foundation. So that we are in communication, we are open to communication with, with the process, but we have not made any decisions at this time. So that's what I want to let you guys know today. Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak? Yes, ma'am.
My name is Stephanie Stewart. I live at 2923 Caldwell Lane. I've lived in the Fox Valley area since 1996. I moved here from the East Coast, and I can say that the Fox Valley area has been my home, and the reason I did not go back to the East Coast when I graduated high school, which was shocking to my entire family, side note. Very shocking. I chose Geneva because, one, it is an incredible community, incredible town, green space. I have neighbors that I know on a first-name basis. I could walk down my street right now, and I could point to houses and tell you the first names of people. I know their pets. I know their children. It is a safe community. We have our garage. We have our garage doors open, front doors open. It's an open space for all of us, and we all feel safe. With the idea of affordable housing, I think it's important. It's something that's needed as someone who's on the younger scale. I remember what it was like driving through Geneva and St. Charles, and all of the rents and all of the costs were $2,000 and $3,000. But I can also say as a homeowner, I have dealt with renters on Caldwell Lane spending over $1,100 a month for a three-bedroom townhouse, and they were horrible. Driving through yards, threatening people, parties, evictions, police getting involved. And now we're going to welcome under $1,100 a month in rent to potentially invite worse circumstances into our neighborhood. I dealt with it. Three doors down from me, I had a woman get in my face screaming at me as a renter paying $1,200 a month for three bedrooms. I have serious concerns about somebody with a one, two, or three-bedroom apartment paying less than that. I don't know their credentials, I don't know their background, but I can tell you after that circumstance happened, three doors down from me, the management company came to my door to talk to me about it. They apologized to me, they gave me their personal cellphone number, contact information, and said that if it ever happens again, they'll be evicted immediately. So with this new opportunity with Emma's Landing, am I going to get that same respect? Because as a city resident of the city of Geneva, I deserve respect. I pay my taxes, I take care of my property, I help my neighbors out. I deserve respect, I've earned respect. And I can tell you right now, sitting in this room tonight, I've never felt more disrespected in my life than seeing three individuals sit here, side-looking each other, shaking their heads, and the entire presentation, in my opinion, was not up to par. If you want to come into Geneva and you want a place in Geneva, come prepared, come professional, and be respectful. And on top of that, we're talking about adding affordable housing and rental. What about the rental properties we already have in Geneva? We have Brittany Court, we have Pepper Valley, and we have rental properties in Mill Creek. Is affordable housing included in that? Is there a percentage of those units that's included in the affordable housing that is supposed to be in Geneva? Because if it isn't, why aren't we looking at those properties and those open units right now and saying, "Let's add affordable housing here and then build less"? There's no necessity to build 45 new units if we've got units potentially available in other rental communities right now. I appreciate your time, I appreciate you listening, I know that this has been a very emotional night for a lot of people in the room, and I thank you for that.
Thank you. Anyone else new who would wish to speak on this matter? Yes, ma'am.
Maureen McKeo, 1568 Kirkwood Drive. I was on the task force that yielded the report in 2014 and was also very supportive of the steps the city council took to try to expand the affordable housing. The desire is to create more diverse housing stock in Geneva. It is seriously skewed in one direction and towards one end, and this ability to do that enhances all of our lives. And I think when we think of who's living in affordable housing, we should realize they may be some of our neighbors right now, or our teachers, or our library assistants. And I would encourage people to not equate having less money with being less responsible. I understand that anecdotally, we've all had experience with people who have less and do less, and we've all had experience with people who have more and do less. And so I think we need, despite our personal individual experiences, to keep an open mind. And when we're talking about screening people and accusing people before we even know them of criminal activity, I think that's not the community we really want to be. And I understand the people most impacted by where we build are going to have stronger feelings, but I would also ask if we could try to rely on facts and data. Because although there may be postings on social media about certain properties because of certain people who've had bad experiences, or maybe imagined experiences, or have a vendetta of some kind, that may not reflect the actual facts of the units that the developer has already built. So it would be appreciated, I think, by all of us and most of the community if we could keep an open mind and rely on facts and on data as we go through this process. And the final point I'd like to make is Sterling Manor, which, I'm sorry, I don't know, seems to be a vibrant community, well-spoken and organized. We don't have the benefit of having the people who will live in these 45 units here to present their case. And if we did, we might be, find people equally passionate and articulate and desirable and want them as our neighbors and enjoy their company. Thank you.
Thank you. All right.
Could I respond to that?
Ma'am, please.
I am offended. I'm sorry, I'm offended by what she's accusing us of being bigoted.
Ma'am, I have a hearing to run right now. I still have some things I have to take care of. You will have another opportunity to speak. Is there anyone else here who wishes to speak on this matter who's new? Yes, sir.
I thought my name was on, Melissa. Chuck Cook, 2511 Wallon Avenue.
I'm sorry.
That's okay. So great points tonight. I agree with most of what was said here today, as my concerns as well. My understanding that this property will be supported by the rents that are paid. I'm just curious to see, is that really possible, to maintain a property with low rent? In my house, you know, as it gets older, it needs more repair, it costs more money, things go up. If you're going to have subsidized or just set rent, how are you going to pay for this community five years, 10 years, 15 years down the road?
Okay, thank you. All right, anyone else new who wishes to speak on this matter? Okay, I will now, what's that? We'll have additional time to speak now. Please be brief and to the point. And I believe the lady who spoke earlier would like to speak.
My concern, I resent that because we are not.
Please state your name and address again.
My name is Marg O'Houville. I live at 2809 Caldwell Lane. I live on the pond, so I have a direct view of the pond, of the railroad tracks, and that's my big concern, especially since I've learned that Union Pacific is putting in a third track. You have no idea, unless you live there, the amount of train traffic that's going down there, the noise it causes, the pollution it causes, and now they're able to blow their whistle anytime they want to. And you're going to build houses right next to three tracks. I mean, there is a safety issue there. With the pond, there's a safety issue. In the winter, I see kids out there when there's ice, they play hockey there, and I have a coronary every time I'm watching them, thinking they might. So my concern is safety, and it's just, it isn't a very, it isn't a nice place. I mean, you've got, like I said, commercial, industrial on one side, three train tracks on the other, and then a pond. And, well, the pond is nice, but a lot of the trees that made it pretty are gone because Union Pacific's cut them all down. You know, I thought they were just cleaning the brush up, but nope, they just took all those trees out. It's a safety issue. I just don't think, I think we need affordable housing, but that's not the place.
All right, thank you, ma'am. Tracy, you'll be given a chance to speak later. Okay? Yes, sir. Please come forward. Please be concise. Name and address.
Mark Byers, 967 Lewis. So I just want to clarify one quick thing. So I think we're conflating two terms oftentimes, and we have this debate about the affordable housing thing. And I was at the master plan or comprehensive plan, whatever that was, a few years ago, and I remember it coming up then too. My, look, I think you can be for affordable housing in Geneva, in a place that oftentimes prices seniors out of their homes by the time they try and pay taxes, even though they've lived there their entire lives. My grandma lived in Geneva most of her life, my mom's lived in Geneva her entire life, I've lived in Geneva almost all of my life, except for a five-year stint in North Aurora. I am all for affordable housing, right? You want to build a group of ranch homes over here so somebody like my mom can downsize into it and not pay what she'd have to pay to effectively sell her house and then pay all of that money into a smaller home? Fine. If you can make money on it, build an affordable home. But there's a difference between affordable and subsidized, right? So there's a difference between my mom saying, "I don't want to live in my home anymore, I want a smaller home," and saying, "I'm going to sell this one for $350,000, roll it all into a $350,000 condo and say, 'There you go, that's my new home,' right? I got no problems with saying, 'I'm a builder, I can make money doing this,'" because obviously if they felt like they could, they'd do it, right? So if you could build homes that then either older people who've lived here a long time or people that want to move in here, don't need a big home or can't afford one, right? Because if you live in Eaglebrook or the historic district, that's not affordable to me, so I didn't buy it because I can't afford it. So Randall Square was affordable to me, right? It's all relative. No one's against affordable housing, they're just against this particular brand of somewhat affordable housing, depending on how you want to define it. But if you can't afford it because it's being paid for by the government, then it's not really affordable, right? It's subsidized. They're two different definitions. So to claim that people are not for affordable housing because they don't like this particular version of how you're defining it is wrong. That's all.
All right, thank you. I think that's...
I want to make one more.
Okay.
So petitions.
That should be it, I think. Yeah, well, again, I would encourage anyone who wants to petition to definitely petition during a public hearing portion of it. I mean, that is definitely a time to do it. We will take all petitions.
Lots of people couldn't attend because, as was stated before, unfortunately...
They will have other opportunities. If this, there'll be many, there'll be at least two additional public hearings on this.
Okay, so you don't want these now?
I can take them, I just got to emphasize that.
All right, I just want to...
Please do not think this is the end of the petitions, I just want to state that.
Okay, well, I have them.
Please submit a...
People spent a lot of time running around getting signatures, so I do want to give them to you.
Can I finish what I was going to say?
Sure.
I, please, if you want to petition, the real good time to do it is during the public hearing for the actual proposal. Again, this is a simple courtesy review process.
A courtesy review process, which unfortunately, Mr. Stocking, most of the people in our neighborhood felt like was thrust upon them. We got this message out in a day and a half.
I am sorry that you felt that way. This is, again, it's a thing that we do when it's a request put to the city to have an initial feedback on it.
Okay, so if I may, we feel like someone just said, you know, if you intersperse the quote-unquote "affordable housing," and let's not, you know, dice up words here, it's subsidized housing. And I agree with the gentleman who just made that comment. My husband and I worked really, really hard to purchase our house. You know, I aspire to live in the woods of Fox Glen. I can't afford a $1.5 million house, so instead I live in Geneva in Sterling Manor. And yet, thank you. Yeah, and yet, that's where I live because the government's not going to buy me a house in the woods of Fox Glen.
All right.
So instead of dispersing some of these subsidized housings kind of around, you want to plop them right in the middle of my neighborhood. I'm paying $11,000 in taxes, I'm sorry, I don't think it's that quite fair. Like it or not, I'm sorry, I don't think it's fair.
All right, that's fine, you've made your point.
Okay, so to address something, okay, so to address something that was asked earlier, I'd just like to clarify. Someone keeps saying they can, one of your architects here keeps saying that they can expand the pond. First and foremost, as Steve Hernandez just pointed out, the pond is owned by the association.
And that will be dealt with.
And that will be dealt with. However, I do have one thing to ask, if you don't mind. How do you expand a natural pond without upsetting the ecosystem of that pond? Or do we not care about that kind of stuff anymore?
Consider that as part of the proposal.
Okay. You consider that, the homeowners association considers that, and I know the question was asked earlier tonight, because there is real-life fish in there. The children in this town, in our subdivision, fish there all the time. Joe Ryan fished there as a child, okay? We're going to disrupt the whole ecosystem? I don't know. Is that worth it?
All right, but it's so noted.
Okay, so the other question I would like to ask, somebody asked tonight, "Has the property been sold?" I'm asking each one of you, and I would like you to be honest with us. Has the property been sold to the Burton Foundation?
No.
Positively not. Then can I ask you why you had civil engineers out there flagging it today? Because the streets are marked out where they plan on cutting it, if I may.
There's a mouse you can use in the, right below there, and it may mean you just roll it, you can find the handle.
Kind of hard to navigate. There you go.
Okay, so the civil engineer was out early this morning with their tripods measuring. There is a flag somewhere here with some pink ribbon hanging off of it. They've sprayed the curb here, and here, and here, and here, and they've sprayed the curb here, 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 and here, and all four places have ribbon hanging off of it. So oddly, that's kind of where they're going to put the inlet routes in, so who would spend the money on a civil engineer to do that if the property's not sold yet?
I can address that.
Please do, John.
It's not uncommon when a party is interested in buying a property, whether it's from a city or a private developer, to go and invest both time and cost, architects' work and engineers' work, to see what the cost would be, not only, to see what engineering challenges they might have, just to see, to come up with, to see if the property would even be feasible. Before they take it from this meeting to the next meeting, which would be, they'll digest everything they've heard and go back and huddle and say, "If we make these changes or these contemplated changes, and we have these issues to deal with, does the project still make sense?" So it's really not uncommon for a private developer of any type to invest that type of money or time. That's why, in my vision, view, why you would see that stuff out there, is because they have the right, they probably ask the city, "Can we go out there and market just to see how this lays out?"
Okay, okay. Well, thank you for answering that. I appreciate that. And I guess then my last question would be, still, if someone from the Burton Foundation could answer that, how do they choose the residents who will live in the property? Where do they get those residents from? Can you answer that tonight for us?
All right, yeah, okay.
All right, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Tracy, I think it's...
I have one last question.
Sure.
Karen, I'll send you a question for sport. So my understanding is the townhouse, HOA owns the front 20 feet? Is anybody...
25.
125?
125.
Okay, so they would have to grant an easement for X amount of dollars, most likely. I doubt they would be trading goods and services in order for the entire subdivision to be built, correct?
Correct. They would need to secure property through that, secure access through that property or another property.
So if the Sterling Manor HOA does not approve the sale of that land to Emma's Landing, does Emma's Landing have another way that they can obtain access to this parcel?
That's pure conjecture, I have no idea.
It's not a lawsuit, I just lived down the street.
I have no idea.
Tracy, can you add back your list of questions?
I have absolutely no idea. Nor does anyone else in this audience.
Oh, so, okay. Sterling Manor HOA, did everybody hear that?
No.
Would you like me to answer the question?
All right, wait a second. All right, timeout. One, again, one person at a time, speak, please.
When this land was previously going to be a water treatment facility, how would Geneva have accessed that property?
There is language on the plat of subdivision for Sterling Manor that granted access for those public utility purposes, but not for private development. So we believe we had access for that purpose, but not for this purpose.
Would Geneva have any influence on being able to influence that access from your previous to the ownership of Geneva's lot, our Geneva lot, that we all own as a city? Would they be able to influence that? Are there any remaining documentation out there? Are there any remaining documentation out there or no?
Land records is...
If they would sell that property, then it wouldn't be...
You can go to Kane County and go to the land records and find out how you want to know about that property, like anyone else in this room.
Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Tracy? Yes, that, that's it for public comment. Tracy, please.
Okay. I'm going to try to go through this as quickly as I can. So I have notes all over the place, but well, there was a question about the rents that we set and if we get vacant units, do we reduce the price? We don't reduce our prices. 83% of the people that live in our communities in our apartment buildings come from the community that we build them in. So the marketing at the, and that's later on. Marketing is to the city that we're building the building in. That's the first step in marketing. Usually, I get about one and a half times a waiting list. I got 45 units. I'll probably have about 80 to 90 applicants on the waitlist. I already have a waitlist for this property and the people on the waitlist are from Geneva. We talked about...
Existing residents?
Yes. We talked about reserves. We were asked about what happens when the roof goes bad. We capitalize at closing substantial reserves for these buildings. In addition to that, every month, for every unit, per unit, it's 350, 250 or 350, depending on the investor, and I'll get into that in a minute, per unit, per month, goes into a set aside for reserves, for future needs, whatever they may be. So not only do we have a balance to start, we feed that every single month, just like homeowners associations do. That's the reserve. The train tracks, we have, in South Elgin, we have two properties between the river and the tracks. And then there's the Tucker Building at the top of the hill looking at the tracks and the train runs right through it. Train tracks don't deter housing, maybe for some people, but there are ways to do that. That's what the train tracks are about.
Tracy, will you take questions during your, your answer? On the back end of the property along the tracks, will there be anything like a fence or any kind of berm or anything? Is it, at this time, do you interpret, anticipate that?
Our goal is actually to fence the property by the basin and the tracks.
Okay.
The real estate taxes, we pay standard real estate taxes. And for this property, it's 45 units. We pay about $137,000 a year on a 50-unit. So we pay substantial real estate taxes like anybody else. Being a not-for-profit does not mean that we get a break on real estate taxes. We don't. We pay our real estate taxes. The negative comments, I see them. Those are people that were angry, just like today, before we get started. Those comments are up. As we're building, the comments stay up. And then if somebody gets told to leave because they weren't complying with the lease or the riders, they get angry and they do write things, absolutely. Down later on on my list, the Wildberry, we are a part of that development. We are not the majority owner. We're a minority owner. And this management company that manages Kane County is not that management company.
Is that the Rockford property that was discussed?
Yeah, yeah. So that's a different majority owner. They have full control. We're a minority owner. We don't make decisions. We just have a minority interest in that development. And it's not the same management company. How this is funded came up. They keep talking about subsidized housing. There's no subsidies here. We have no rental assistance. We have no Section 8. This is private equity. And I'll explain how that equates to the lower rents. This is private equity and there are loans. The way that this works is if you've got a million dollar home and you buy that home with these tax credits that are for Fortune 5, Walt Disney, Eastman Kodak, Nationwide Insurance, Bank of America, Raymond James, PNC Bank, Chase, they all invest in affordable housing. They all have loans on affordable housing. Bank of St. Charles, prime example. The way that works is the equity comes in, that's equity. We don't pay that back. So the debt, the loans that are put on the property, those are mortgages, which are much less than that million dollar home that we bought. We don't have a million dollar mortgage. We might have a $500,000 mortgage. So the rents, we have underwriting. We have standards that we have to follow. And there's a 22-page Excel underwriting that shows us the rents that we set, we can afford to pay reserves, pay debt, pay real estate taxes and all the operations for any of our developments. That's how this is funded. So the equity's private. Bank of America has, Raymond James is in, in South Elgin on those two properties. Sunair, Great Lakes previously is in Gurnee. We have different investors in different properties. We don't pay that back. So the loan or the mortgage on your home is much less, so your payment is much less. That's how affordable housing works. The count on kids, I don't, I don't know. Just because you say it doesn't mean it's true. We have a 50-unit development that's for families and there's 12 children that live in that property. The impact on the assessments? When I went through Water's Edge, I was met with resistance. We built the building. Everyone said, beautiful, we love your building, very quiet building. We're sorry. I got that a lot at the grand opening. Fast forward to what Chuck Miles was saying is, the city invited us to come and build a 55 and older, not a peep. At that zoning meeting for the Marison Mill 55 and older, one of the councilmen told me, you actually increased the values of the home, the homes that are north of Water's Edge. We increased the values of those homes. We didn't decrease them. We have the exact same zoning criteria like any other developer for a market rate high-end complex. We go through the same thing and it costs us the same amount of money to build the building. The open housing non-elderly, I wrote that down. This is, we have some ranch sides that are available to anyone. We have our family developments. We actually have elderly folks living with us because they want to live there. We can't say, no, you can't live here because you're 60. Anyone can live there. Pets, we have no pet policy. The one thing is with comfort dogs or comfort animals, that's a, that's a protected class. We have to accept them. They have to prove they own the dog. They have to prove the shots. They have to give us a picture of the dog. And annually, they give us their updated medical for the dog. I'll save that one for last. Safety. We do have someone that's in the office. I know what a gentleman said, oh, well, that'll go away once it's leased up. It doesn't. There's a person there tending to the tenants, regular job. It's a full-time position that we've underwritten for that complex. They get a paycheck and they're there. So it is, it doesn't go away. This one is zoning as well. We talked about Wildberry. Cars per unit, just like Sterling across the street, we can't tell them how many cars that they can have. We do have the two-car garage and we have the, the parking in front of the garage for two more cars. It does not cross the sidewalk.
Your plans for guest parking?
There's guest parking. How many? 18 is the grand total that will ultimately be there. The market, a gentleman asked, where do we market to? This development came up because the folks that work on Randall Road can't afford to live in Geneva. There were a lot of people who obviously know the Burton Foundation, who had said, why haven't you considered Geneva? There's all this retail, but we have nowhere to live. We come from different communities to live here. That was what started my thought about five years ago for Geneva. So when we market, we're marketing in Geneva first. And then it does open up. It will go to St. Charles. It will go to Batavia. But our first goal in marketing is the community that the, the building is built in. The garbage, we do have containers. The communities actually take the garbage when they're done to the dumpster like any other apartment complex. Maintenance is full-time on-site. Daley is walking the grounds to make sure there's no garbage on-site. That's routine.
Hey Tracy, does that mean, you have a manager? Are they also doubling as a maintenance person? So there's maintenance and management?
Yes. No parking on the, the streets. There's no parking on Lewis where it's going to be in their lease. As a rider, they're not to park there. If they're parked there, they're going to get hit or they're going to get towed. And as far as we're, we're talking about parking, every resident in our building gets a placard or a sticker, depending on which way they want to go with that particular development. Overnight, if there is a overnight car on our property and that tenant didn't tell the manager, this kind of car, this color, and here's the license plate, they're staying the night, we have a towing company that comes through. They tow the car. That's just standard management. Again, years after operations, things are going to go in a basket somewhere. They don't. We have many properties that are years old and they're all as nice as when we bought them.
What's your average tenant occupancy? I mean, how long do they stay in your units, on average?
Well, in our senior developments, they're there.
Excuse me. She didn't interrupt you when you were talking.
In our senior developments, they really don't leave. I would say it's less than a 5% turn. In our family developments, it might be more like a 10% to 15% because their job takes them somewhere else and they'll move out. Fair housing, you know, I want to remind, I wrote that down because there's a lot of comments tonight that are kind of getting close to fair housing issues. This is a zoning meeting and we are presenting what you want on that development. So I just want to make sure we kind of bring it back to zoning issues because once you pass that door, you're getting into fair housing issues. And we really don't want to go that route. The subsidized housing, this isn't some, not subsidized housing. I don't have any Section 8 rental assistance. That's subsidized. I'm not getting free money anywhere. I have an investor who's a Fortune 500 company giving me millions to build it, but it's not subsidized. I have no Section 8 in this building.
What's the state of Illinois' role in this? Do they have a role in this at all?
The Elder Housing Development Authority?
Yeah.
So the federal government back in 1986 created the IRS Tax Code, Section 42. What that says, and apparently it was from the 70s, but I don't know, what they do is the companies who have a huge federal tax liability can invest. So they created this vehicle to say, you've got to get rid of money. We need money. Give us money and we'll give you a reduction, dollar for dollar, on your federal tax liability. Those are Fortune 500 companies. They're not people. Maybe they're billionaires. Warren Buffett, Berkshire Hathaway invests in affordable housing. And I just wrote it again. We are laser focused on, this is what the city has determined for this property. We've worked very hard with staff to make sure that we are compliant with what the city of Geneva wants on this site. And we will continue all the way through the process to do that.
Anything else? Any other questions?
Thank you for your time.
Guys, any questions?
I have some comments. When you're ready for those at the end.
Kind of at that point, yeah. Couple more questions for Tracy? Okay, all right. Thank you, Tracy.
Thank you for, for bringing this forward tonight. It was a good presentation. I think we've, we've uncovered a lot of areas I think you'll spend some time on in the next few weeks as you decide whether or not you're going to go forward with it. Some of the things I think you, you've already discussed or hit on, but I expect that you'll be spending some more time on the traffic issues. And when you do a traffic study, I think you heard a lot of folks talk about Fargo and the impact it might have on Fargo because there's already an issue as it backs up past Fox Valley Family Physicians and the fire station. Maybe incorporating some of that into your traffic study and maybe even to Randall Road because this, this subdivision does impact and does exit that way primarily. I mean, the two ways of exit are to the west, if they're going to Peck, and to the east, they go right into Fargo and Randall. Thinking you'll need to articulate in your, in your application just the, you know, how your, how this will be managed, the management presence. I, I mean, we, we are able to determine that there's going to be maintenance, there's going to be property management. Maybe just some level of discussion and detail on how that's going to be a day-to-day presence at the site. You heard some comments about crime. You heard some, so maybe just, you know, just the nature of, and, and property values. I think you, you did a good job touching on that at the end, but I think that that will come up again in a public hearing. So I think you should be ready to, to address some of those concerns. Numerous comments on runoff and, and engineering. So I think that as you guys work with the city engineering department, making sure that whatever's done to the, to the detention pond, and those things can be really deep. I, I wonder if I buy my house, it's 38 feet deep. You know, so these are not the shallow ponds. But as you expand that, make sure that that's capable of taking the runoff from your property. And then over time, it gets fed over to the, the one by the shopping center, I'm sure. But just make, that'll, having a good handle on that will, will go a long way to answering some of these questions. And then there'll be, it'll come up in your application just how the impact on schools and the parks and, and how that will be handled, whether it be cash in lieu of, of land or whatever. And I'm sure it's going to be a cash payment. So those are things I anticipate that you'll, you'll, you'll hear at the next hearing. And I, I hope this comes forward to a hearing because I think there's enough here to, to talk more about. And I look forward to that.
I would agree with almost everything that John said. I would just add that, first of all, specifically to the list, I think the property maintenance plan, the fund, the capital fund that you set up at the beginning and it gets fed each month, I think that's really important to really define clearly for everybody to understand. And then on my list was pretty much everything else that, that John had mentioned. But I also just wanted to say, you know, what I'm hearing tonight is, is a lot of impassion, discussion, a lot of concern. And I just think being as forthright with information, not that you haven't been or the city hasn't been, but you know, the more that we can communicate and lay things out in not necessarily engineering terms, but terms that, that we can all understand as far as like the, the water runoff and the drainage plan. I would also encourage maybe the city to set up something maybe like for Milray Sin, kind of a website for affordable housing that people can kind of rely on. I hear a lot of requests for information, a lot of concern that they just got this at the last minute. That's how we operate. So I don't think for us, that's, that's any concern on our end. But you know, I think the residents have a lot of valid concerns about, about learning what's happening in their neighborhood. And the more that we can help that, I think, like John, I want to hear more about this. I hope you bring it forward. And I think if we all work together, I think this could be a great project for Geneva and for the city.
Not much more to add to, to that. But, but again, I just, I, I do think that factual versus, you know, anecdotal responses can go a long way to addressing, you know, many of the comments that may have been made. And I'm sure a lot of those, those, if you do go forward, you'll, you'll have to address things technically at the next, at the next level, so. to address things technically at the next, next level, so.
Yeah, I agree. I think it should come forward. It's something that community really needs. I mean, it's documented. I mean, we've had a deficit for a long time. We've been on this board, have sat in numerous proposals. We try to encourage housing coming in at a price point that's a little more affordable than that we currently get, and we've been very, very frustrated in just the tools that we're given with zoning and management controls, we just can only affect the market rate so much. And so, you know, we appreciate you at least coming in and answering our proposal at some point. Finally, I'd like to say, we're all residents of Geneva here, all of us. We all want best for the city. I mean, we volunteer. The reason why? We care. So we put time in, we care, we listen, we want your input. And if this moves forward, we'll look forward to hearing more input. Anything else? All right.
Just motion to adjourn.
Just got a motion to adjourn?
Do adjourn.